It is 9:01, and I've called the January 22nd, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We do have a quorum. We have Ms. Pastor Shelley Kyle from Bethanyham Baptist Church here to do our invocation. I asked Ms. Kyle to come up. Would anyone please stand for our invocation?
May we bow our heads, please? Most heavenly kind Father, we come before you this morning calling upon your holy name. We thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you, Lord, for this Board of Supervisors meeting. We ask your blessings upon this meeting and upon each and every one in their respective positions. We ask you to lead God and direct. May everything be done in decency and in order. We pray your perfect will to be done in all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Always remain standing for our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome. We'll move into our agenda. Citizens' time. I don't think we had anybody signed up, anybody would like to come forward and speak during citizens' time. This is your opportunity. Here none will close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion second for the payment of invoices. Is any invoice, any board member would like to pull out or discuss? Here none will do a roll call vote. Mr. Vault?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item is minutes of our previous meeting of January the 8th and 16th of 2019. Entertain a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, any correction or changes that may be made to the minutes. Here none will do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 And the chair would abstain, I wasn't at either meeting. Next we'll move into old business, and I'm gonna make a change in our agenda and move, since VDOT's here already this morning, and we're coming up with the Buckley Drive abandonment, we're gonna change VDOT up to this in the old business too. How do you want to proceed, Mr. Chairman?
I think first thing to do, Mr. Chairman, would be proceeding with the abandonment of Buckley Drive, just as a rehash, the, as you're aware, the board held a public hearing at the last meeting. No action was taken, and you all did request for VDOT to come and address this issue with you before any action was taken. So I think inviting Mr. Russell up and having any questions presented to him, and then considering the resolution.
Good morning, Mr. Russell. You want to come on up and see if the board has any questions for you, or you want to say a few words before?
I guess I can quickly recap how we've arrived at this point, but Buckley Drive, that road used to be a through road that went from currently Route 11 over to Radio Drive. It was Route 679. It was brought into the system in 1932 under the Bird Act. It has a prescriptive easement, no right of way. It's only prescriptive easement. And in 1965, when the interstate was built, that basically cut through the middle of Buckley Drive, and that left 13 hundredths of a mile section that is now Buckley Drive. At that time, the property served one parcel belonging to Mr. Buckley, and maintenance practically pretty well ended. It was basically a driveway serving one residence and one person. So VDOT ceased maintenance of the road. It did remain in the system. Recently, this came to our attention, and the property has been divided amongst two different parcels. One is a Mr. Fogle Song, and one is a Ms. Wilson's, my understanding. And also, I guess, the big question, there is currently a shed or a barn built right in the middle of the roadway there at the residence. And my understanding is that that was constructed prior to dividing between the two property owners currently. So Mr. Buckley, when he owned it, is the one that constructed that shed. So the question is now, that has came into question, what do we do? And the department's recommendation is to abandon the roadway. As it only, it no longer serves the citizen's need. Basically, it's a private drive, and we don't need to expend funds, state funds, to help maintain a private drive. That is our standing, that's kind of where we're at, and that's where, that's our recommendation with to abandon the roadway. So I will take any questions you have and try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Russell?
Is there any assistance VDOT could give to Mr. Fogle Song on putting in a right-of-way on his property to the rear?
An entrance way? He has called me.
We can issue an interest permit as far as financial assistance to construct a private interest note.
Any other questions?
Since it is a prescriptive easement on the map, Stephen, the part of question, will part of it go to each landowner and require a lot line adjustment, or?
Would not require, I mean, it would just go to each landowner from where the prescriptive easement is. It would just revert back to them.
I guess my question is between the point A of the highway and the building, would Mr. Fogle Song get 15 feet of that, or is it all behind the building?
It's all behind the building. Ms. Wilson owns both sides of the property where the building is located.
So with the prescriptive easement, though, back when Mr. Buckley did it, other than technically being a right-of-way, he owned both sides at that time, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Russell, and we'll, you won't, we'll take up this resolution now, then we'll go into board time with Mr. Russell before he can leave. I entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-01.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I've looked at this, and I've tossed it back and forth. I've got a real problem with this coming from a property rights standpoint. Mr. Fogle Song has bought another house, from what I understand, and if he could, more than if you could bring that map up or that picture. If Mr. Fogle Song was to sell 51336A, if I'm reading that correctly, on the far left where his house and barns are, he would have to put in an entrance off of Wesley Highway into 51338 there. I don't think it's our job to take away his right because of VDOT's mistake. VDOT should have fixed this years ago. It's come up. I feel bad for Mr. Buck because he's, he's got a good business right there in that building. But why is it our job to take away his right of access to his property to where he's going to have to spend money out of his pocket if he ever wants to sell that land?
I understand what you're saying, but don't her land, I mean, does, her land is wider than what the easement is. So he would still be crossing her land going down the easement because the line is behind her house, and it's wider than the easement.
On her parcel there. My point is, they, you know, I don't understand why VDOT can't provide some type of financial assistance to put a right-of-way in there.
To put a entrance way?
To put an entrance way in there.
Mr. Russell, in the, in the, right-of-way in 11 there, is the ditch line in the right-of-way? I mean, I'm not asking, would, could, would, would VDOT be able to put a cupboard in the right-of-way in the ditch line for him to make an entrance into his?
I think there's an embankment there. I think you'd have to put in fill. Am I correct?
It's a pretty steep drawdown, because I mean, that's, that's my question, is, I mean, it's going to benefit VDOT, or it should, it's not going to really benefit you because you haven't been maintaining that road up there. But if you had to go back to maintaining that road, then it would benefit you to do away with it.
But we don't, we would not go back to maintaining the road.
But I mean, is, is there any way that y'all can help him? I mean, just if there's, y'all had stuff to dump somewhere, could you help him build it?
I mean, sure, if we needed a disposal area, but, you know, when we go to the, I wouldn't want to construct a roadway with what we put in a disposal area, that's pretty well waste. And I mean, I guess that's, you know, that's part of my point, it's not like it's level and he could just put a gate in the fence and drive right off the level. I mean, that, it's going, you know, it's going to take some work for him to gain access. Now, when Mr. Buckley owned all of it, nobody said a word, and I understand that, but, you know, we're, we're here to represent the citizens, not represent VDOT. And VDOT's asking us to do their dirty work, the way I look at it.
But what I'm asking, if you, if you don't abandon the right-of-way, how does he still have, I know he'd have to go through the barn to gain access to that property, because he doesn't have access from the house to the, to 11 on that side of the, the right-of-way, the easement.
I think that's a civil case, it can be decided by somebody else.
If I could just add one comment, I understand exactly what Mr. Vault's saying, but I will state, even, VDOT is not the one that has requested for a disabandon. Ms. Wilson is the one who requested this abandoned. VDOT has the process and procedure that we have to follow, whether I like it or not, but...
Well, and Mr. Barrett's, you know, Mr. Russell said that, you know, gave us VDOT's opinion, wants to get rid of it. Just to east of that is Imperial Lane, which is another state-maintained road that serves two properties. Why aren't we addressing both of them? Because there's not been a complaint. I mean, what's good for one property owner ought to be good for the other, I think.
I would, I agree. I would say if one of those landowners came and made a request, we'd be doing the same thing.
For clarification, we've got a vote on this, so when, when you leave the road going up to the building, does Ms. Wilson own both sides of the road now?
Yes.
Well, I think, Scott, there's longstanding case law, isn't it? That on these roads that are not serviceable, and you own both sides, you can ask the board to close them.
Yeah, I think anybody can ask for the road to be closed.
If you own both sides, it's on your property, and the easement is not the same thing as the deed, right?
Correct.
It's, it's an easement. You've had a right for a period of time to travel over that land. The land changed when Mr. Buckley passed, and it's, it's not there anymore. The agreement's not there anymore.
Well, you know, in my opinion, the way I look at it, Mr. Buckley divided the land up where there wouldn't be a problem getting to this property, to her house. I think he made it perfectly clear to me that that's why he give her enough land on both sides of the roads of that easement to make sure there wasn't any problem for her with any of the other family members of, of his family. That's the way I see it, so.
And I'm not, I'm not taking sides either way, because if, if you don't cut the road off, or if you, you know, Mr. Fogle Song loses some additional road frontage on a state-maintained road, even, a state road even though it's not maintained on the back of this property. If, if you don't vacate this and they're asking to come back, then you're, Ms. Wilson is looking at losing a building that's in the middle of the right-of-way to be torn down to come in. So, I, I mean, I understand both sides of where they're coming from here, and it's not an easy solution, so.
Just a few things that I'd like to point out also. Mr. Vault, you, you mentioned that VDOT dropped the ball, and it's VDOT's program, problem, but probably there's a building code that, when a building is built on property, it has to be approved by the county, right? No, if it's, I assume he built it under agriculture.
Agriculture, and they don't have to have a building for me.
Then I will retract that statement.
Mr. Russell, ultimately, that's a VDOT sign at the end of their road, correct?
Right.
Then that's...
We, we haven't maintained it, we had no interest in it. He built, the one property owner built the building, that was affecting nobody but himself. We didn't, we didn't contest that. We weren't maintaining it.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I meant when I said y'all dropped the ball. It happened way before your time.
We had no interest in it, any way you want to word it. But now, and another way to look at it is, it was existing when the property was given or sold, when it transferred hands to Mr. Fogle Song, this building was already there. So he hasn't lost, he's never had the access, he didn't lose it. It wasn't as though he had the property and then the building was built.
Right.
And another way to look at it, if we did require Ms. Wilson to remove, to remove the building, at the same time, we would have to require Mr. Fogle Song to reconstruct the road from the property line out to the interstate. One time it was a road, right now it's basically a hayfield. So, you know, what, what do property owners have to be treated the same? And we have no interest in doing either. It's just that our opinion, and I've talked with the Attorney General's office, is that if this went to a civil case, a court's going to rule the same thing, is that the property no longer serves the public, and it needs to revert back to the current owners. That's our opinion. So that's why we're supporting the abandonment.
Stephen, I have a question. Jeff, you owns both sides of what's behind the, what do you know, the tree line there?
No. The 126, the house, right on the side of Buckley Drive, right there where Martha's Curse is.
Right.
Ms. Wilson owns that property on the left.
Right.
And she owns everything on the right.
Yeah, you're wrong tree line.
Tree line to the left.
I'm talking about the tree line over here behind the 36.
Behind this house.
But he, he owns basically the feet, both of those two big fields, plus he actually owns the 31339A.
No, he does not own the 339A.
Oh, I thought he told us he did.
He may, he may, I do not know. The, the, the property lines on previous maps, I've had Mr. Moore address to get corrected. I sent this to Mr. Fogle Song after we corrected the map to make certain that the properties were in the right place, and he indicated they were, they were in the correct place. I did not give confirmation if he owned 339A or not. He may. It looks like on the map, it's all been farmed back in the process.
Right. Well, the reason I was asking is, I mean, I'm not, the part behind, the part with the trees, I'm not concerned about, but the 51339A, if he was to go in right beside, right up that straight stretch up there and put a right-of-way in to his back property, how big, how wide of a right-of-way would it have to be?
Well, the lot he owns, 338, is, you mean, has exist, it's a legal lot. It's been there for many, many years. It has 200 foot of road frontage, over 200 foot of road frontage. He could subdivide that right now. I mean, it, it is legal as it is. So anything he puts in there would just be either an access easement, I mean, there's no requirements that we have.
Well, that's, that, that was what I was thinking, was if he wanted to put a 20-foot road back through, up through there to get to that one property, then he could do that because he's still got the right-of-way, he's still got the road frontage on the other side.
He would just be running to the easement.
Right.
That's correct.
When, when Mr. Fogle Song called me the other day, he said he didn't have a problem with abandoning the easement. He was just, you know, wanting a, a entrance way into, into the property, and he's wanting to know if VDOT would do it. And I told him, I said, "We can ask, that's all." I mean, you know, we can ask. And I don't think he would have any problem getting a, an interest permit there, because there're plenty of site distance on both sides of it. So it's, it's just that he's, he will have to put it in his cell, by your standing.
That's, that's via state law. You know, we can't spend VDOT money building private interests. And that's, you know, that ain't, that's not my opinion, whether I'd want to or not, or what, or what I think, and that's pretty well, we can't spend state money to build a private interest.
Call question.
Okay, we had a request, a call to question. Call for a roll call vote, Mr. Vault?
No.
Yes.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Resolution is adopted six to one. Now, for we, while we have Mr. Russell up here, board time. Mr. Vault, have anything for Mr. Russell?
Not at this time.
Mr. Wester?
I was told that Sheriff's Road was scraped recently, glad it was done.
Ms. Lawson?
Not at this time.
Mr. Hale?
I want to thank you guys for the efforts. Secondary drainage, projects happening, cleanup's going well. Appreciate y'all participating with the trash pickup. Finally, here we're going to have some relief on the gas line crossing down there, Miller's Creek sometime in the next few months, so thanks for the effort.
Coy?
I had to call Mr. Charlie Davis, he says the water on Ricky Road is running down through the field across the driveway. And I have something else I want to say. Thank you very much. I haven't had a phone call for two months. You know what that's...
Mr. Horne?
The only thing I had is, I know we're not doing the six-year plan right now, but someone had called and mentioned a couple roads, so I thought maybe I might mention it to you, and that way if you need to look at them to see if they would qualify, you can. And we may have looked at them in the past. One of them is Ward Branch Road, Kaiser Road, and Zion Church Road, but I think part of it may be on the six-year plan, or we may have looked at it in the past.
We can look at that and get back with you.
Are you done, Mr. Horne?
I think that's it.
Mr. Hale has one more question before I ask.
I guess this may be a county problem that you're dealing with, Jeff. Stephen, Mr. Barrett, something's happening at that pressure tank on 126 there at the firehouse. There's water running down out of that tank area and out onto the road. Could you see if somebody gets some treatment on the road, there's a big ice patch out on the pavement there? As people crest that hill starting down toward the Fort Chiswell Light, there's a patch of ice coming out of our water tank out onto their road. Something, something needs to be done there to keep that ice off the pavement.
Take care of it next to the fire department?
Yeah.
Spring a leak?
I don't know. I don't why it don't leak now, it's looked like that for 40 years.
I was thinking that was the one you always busted out.
It's a tank that has lepersy.
Lepersy.
I just wanted to check with you, Mr. Russell, do you get a chance to check on the potholes on, what is that road did I?
Hager Springs.
Hager Springs?
Had you sent it to me?
Yeah, about a month ago.
If you sent it to me, it got sent to the headquarter. They should, and if it's been a month ago, they should have addressed it, so.
I don't, I'm just, I was just wondering. I haven't had no more calls, so.
Normally, soon as y'all send me something, I ask them to review it, take care of it, and they normally do, but if they haven't, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure, but I assume if you haven't heard anything else, and I told them to, they probably took care of it.
Well, most of it is surface treated. Till you get up there, almost to the end at those farm gates, that, that's a short dead-end road.
If I get a chance this afternoon, I'll write up there and just say. Yet again, thank you, crew and everything for the, they think they done excellent job during our 19 and some inches of snow we had last month, and I think they done excellent job of getting it cleared. And thank you for, you know, working with the sheriff's department and stuff, and picking up the, the bags and stuff in a timely manner. I think that, that helps a lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McRoberts?
I, I do have another road, but I can't tell you what the name of it is. Ms. Gwynn lives down there.
Porter? Porter, right?
Yes, she said something about to see if we can get her zone, see if she was playing it. And I forgot.
We'll look at that one also.
Okay, so anybody have anything else from Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mr. Russell, if I might, if, if these roads, and Sheriff's Road needs to be on that list, also want to be considered for the six-year plan. If we could go ahead and get that spreadsheet relatively soon for the board to be looking at roads and meet the rural rustic requirements and things like that, and I don't know if you have a timeframe yet, I assume we're either April or May for setting up the public hearing on the six-year plan. But if we could get those, another way the board could look at if they want to go do any road viewing tours prior to that, and then we can work with you on setting that public hearing. I would appreciate it. I will mention to the board, I am meeting with VDOT, AEP, and the Gas Company later this week, looking at the Grousridge Road project, trying to get some issues taken care of, relocating of the poles and working with that in the process. There may be some additional documents that need to come back to Board Supervisors, working with the easement and with the Gas Company, getting them to agree to, I don't know the correct word, but I'll call it to be subservient to VDOT's right-of-way in the process, so we'll, we'll, we'll be bringing those back to you as we're getting that done. And also, we met with Jeff last week and are working on the Ready Mix Road entrance, and he's working with us as we try to determine the best way to install or not install a drop inlet, so appreciate that.
How about our, I know they put the poles up, how about the lights on Ready Mix and the light on Ready Mix and Chatting Grove?
I haven't heard anything, first was an update on that, have you?
I, I haven't heard none of them since I got the poles in.
Mr. Horne, we notified them that we're ready.
Oh, yes. Oh, they know?
Because Mr. Nissary said all equipment was there. There, there, it might be a weather-related thing.
Put the area light on the pole, have it strong, this thing, I'll check.
Right. I'll check on that and send Stephen an update, he can send that.
Anybody else got anything? Mr. Russell, thank you for coming. Appreciate every time you do come. Glad to work with VDOT, and I think it's good that we can work together to get some things done.
Thank you all.
Okay, we'll move on into our agenda. Mr. Barrett, anything else on our old business and our other?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman will have any other.
Okay, we'll move into reports. Treasure, Ms. Gwynn? Good morning.
Good morning. Well, I feel like I can stand up here and breathe this morning and facing you all because we finished all mail last week on tax processing, so... because we finished all mail last week on tax processing, so I'm very excited about that. We're now caught up on mail, so when it comes in, we're processing it then. So with that being said, looking at your December financial report, for the general fund, we had a balance of $43,756,798, and that is an increase of about eight and a half million over your November statement that you had, and most of that is predominantly due to tax collections throughout the month of December. Our total in the consolidated account is at $71,717,77, and again, that's a little bit of an increase of over 8.6 million, but last month, the last pages of your financial report, if you go to the very last page, you'll notice that our overall collections for the month of December, tax-related, which is real estate, personal property, everything that we build out in early November for the 2018 tax year, we've collected just a little over 11 million, so we had a very busy month, a lot of money going to the bank. As of right now, I would estimate our tax collections for 2018 are probably at about, I would say at least about 78%. I haven't done a exact calculation on those. We're trying to now catch up on the things that we've put off, so I'm hoping this week I can get work through a lot of other things, but we still have a lot of folks trickling in that are paying. We'll have a lot of folks to pay when they, as they get their income tax refunds. A lot of folks do that because they correlate with county tax due date with your income tax due date of April 15th. So most know as long as they pay by April 15th, they're good, so we'll, we'll see an influx of money coming in from taxes over the next couple of months as well, when everybody gets back to work and everyone can start filing their income tax returns, so. But that's pretty much all that I have this morning. Does anyone have anything?
Question?
Yes.
Your report and what we have, I keep wanting to know if we're doing better in revenue accounts other than personal property and real estate. I've had to eat out more in the last month and a half than I normally do. It seems like that all the places like that truck stop over there at 77, that there's a lot of people eating food at restaurants.
Right.
Is there any way you can monitor and tell us whether those accounts are flat, or whether they're going down, or whether they're increasing in county owned but not departed town?
I don't, well, we don't keep up with anything in town because none of that comes to us. As far as those counts specifically, I mean, I can take a look at, Mr. Grant does outline in his report the monthly meals tax collections and does a comparison over the years. So for December, which is kind of going to be a bad comparison, but for December, we collected $68,600 compared to the same month in 2018. We were at $48,900, but the issue at the time was we had the same mail issues last year as far as being behind on processing the mail, so a lot of payments that came in in December did not get processed until January of last year. So January of last year was excessively higher than December just because of when we were able to get a lot of those posted. The same thing with lodging tax, but for the most part, looks like we're staying about the same. There's about a $2,000 increase on meals tax from November to December as far as collections for that month. Now, those months are always for the previous month, so what we received in December was for November, but it looks like everyone was still steadily eating out. October was our low month, or a lower month thus far for FY '19, so I guess everybody getting their kids back to school, coming off of vacation, they just didn't go out to eat, they, they stayed at home and ate, but for the most part, we're, we're kind of staying about the same. We are up some overall, but it's not a huge amount at this point, so hopefully.
If, if board members would go to page 151 of your board package, there's a couple of things there on the local taxes that's in Mr. Grant's report. One is the local sales and use taxes, and if you just look at the, the red, the red bar that is there, you can see it is trending and stayed higher than the last four years combined. If you go to the next page, which is the meals tax, you can see it started July higher. August, September, and October were actually sort of low at, or lower than the, the previous four years. November did make a recovery, and December obviously shows a higher amount than the last four years. So it's, it's coming in about the same, but it was lower from August to October. It's, it jumped back up in November and December from the trend. Like she said, the blue line that makes the, the big jump down and up, that's, that's just from when tax due was. But it's on an uptrend right now. If you go to the next page, it has the monthly occupancy taxes, which you can see the red line there in 2019, trending a little above what would be our average for the other years. Obviously, December, everything drops back down and runs low until we get to March.
Well, I think that curve shows that our local citizenry doesn't have a lot of impact on either one of those. It's how many people are traveling, because look how that, those curves are similar. One of them's longer than the other one, but i- if your food taxes are down in that Big Dip, if you're looking in the one yard, so was the rooms tax. Is that correct, assumption?
Well, no, the occupancy tax, the, the meals tax jumped in November and December, whereas the, the lodging tax went down from November to December.
And meals is going to stay fairly steady as long as the mailman delivers those envelopes to Ms. Barker's office, because that goes directly to her first and then comes to us. Lodging comes to us, so it ends up in the mix of all of our mail. So lodging did take a significant decline in December for this year and last year, just because those envelopes, like I said, are in the mix of all those pieces of mail, but we do have a few that, that come to us instead of going to Ms. Barker's office, and sometimes the mailman just gets it to the wrong office, but things happen, so.
Why are they handled differently?
Lodging is, is really going to depend on people traveling through, because us locally, unless you're without power because of an ice storm, we're not going to go to the hotel and stay here locally.
Also, there's a doghouse problem.
Right.
Why are those two handled differently?
They just are, and it's just something I know with a lot of offices, you know, the lodging just goes to the treasurer's office, the meals goes to the commissioner first. Can you shed any light on that?
I think it's through an ordinance.
Okay, it may be.
An ordinance, I think.
Is that a county ordinance or a state?
Because the food tax is an ordinance. Food has to come through my office and then go to her, but now the lodging tax does not, the ordinance does not come through our office first.
Would it make things better if we went one way or the other and cleaned that up for either one of you?
Probably as long as it is long, really, it's kind of one in the same. It's just, this time of year, they can process their mail faster than we can.
Does anybody else have any questions from Ms. Gwynn? Thank you, Ms. Gwynn, thank your staff for all the hard work.
Thank you, and I'll give you some final, I'll say, tax season reports of where we're at after we've gotten the mail run and everything next month. I'll do a, a better breakdown now that we can catch our breath a little bit, so, okay, thank you.
Ms. Barker, Commissioner of Revenue. Good morning.
I have my annual report. I think that you, y'all may have a copy of it in your package. We're up on real estate by a million 219,429 from '17. We're up on everything, just a little bit except merchants' capital, and merchants' capital is down $28,288. The rest of, public service, we're up $453,616, and this is dollar amounts that I'm giving, but everything's up except merchants' capital and, you know, until we get some new businesses and stuff in here, that's going to keep going down, so. Any questions about it?
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Barker?
I'd like to know with, Mr. Bear, with, with our new tax that you haven't got any yet, but you're gonna start getting it, have those meetings happened with her of what's gonna happen with the new attendance tax, how that's gonna be handled?
Yeah, Ms. Barker's actually taking the ordinance. She has prepared a form. The form has gone to Mike Crusin at SMG, so yes.
We had discussion about this at times. How often will you get the money to deposit in the county account?
It's gonna be, like if the event, the radio is this coming weekend, we won't get the money until next month. It's the 20th of the next month.
So it's, but it's not gonna be quarterly? You're gonna get paid monthly?
No, it's gonna, it's gonna be monthly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you. Sheriff Donegan?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing for the board. My day is quick.
Y'all have any questions for Sheriff Donegan over the, he's got the, you've got the report on the trash collections of December?
I'd like to have him come up and let's talk.
Come on up, Sheriff. Mr. Hale's got some questions for you.
Since you're aware we're open in Apex and there's gonna be worked out with management and security out there, how, how will your department do the normal flow of traffic and the normal part, not the vent part, but how, how much presence will we have of deputies stopping by? Will it be similar to ball games, or what do you got in mind for management?
I've already talked to, what's he got, Mike?
Mike Crusin.
Mike, and I told him what our fee is for things like that, and they contacted us about the event that was supposed to happen last weekend and asked about it, but it wasn't mine, and we'd never heard back from him again. Our, what we do for most things like that is we charge $75 an hour, three-hour minimum, and that's about 50 bucks cheaper than the state police is charging.
Well, that, I understand that part. That's for troops on the ground for security. What I'm asking you is a regular patrol, would, would we have some presence as part of the general job that y'all do countywide? Like trucks parking down there in that road between the gas stations, that doesn't have anything to do with events, but that's still in what y'all do.
Oh, we can put that, we can put the center on a checklist, just like other businesses.
Well, that no charge, like a routine patrol ought to be in place right now because we've got a building, an investment up there.
The guys do check that.
And it's so close to those transients that come through the two truck stops that I would think that that's a normal security, like any other business should be afforded without charge.
Right, yeah, and it will be.
Okay.
Has been.
Can, can you get it on the regular schedule for patrolling the property up there?
It already, okay, thank you.
Sheriff, I have one quick question. As far as the trash collection goes, I realize this isn't my area, sorry, Coy, but around Huddle Road and Pope Road on the, closer to 94, I was on those roads yesterday, and I couldn't believe the trash that was out there. Will you see if it's on the rotation sometime soon?
Yeah, we get some out there.
Oh, speaking of the trash, and I don't know if, I don't know if we can do this or not, but down around the truck stops, especially Exit 77, that bank, oh, well, actually on both sides.
I'll, I'll send a message to the code enforcement officer. We have a, that's out there for litter on the right-of-ways, and so I'll have him follow up that typically about an every winter event that we've gotta go and poke them and say, "Clean up your right-of-way," and they go clean it up. Thank you for the reminder, it needs to be done.
We'd already talked about lubes on the East Lee Highway side of that bank. The prevailing wind takes it toward the road on East Lee Highway from the lubes truck stop.
Anybody else have anything else? Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, Water Committee. Mr. Horni?
I was gonna say, I wasn't at the meeting, but do you want me to read these?
Yes. Mr. Chairman?
We, we were two hours late on school, and I couldn't be in two places at one time. The Water Committee met on January 15th, 2019 and makes the following recommendations: Accepting Petting Board's Proposal for A&E Preliminary Engineering Design Services for the Fort Chiswell Sewer Extension Project at a cost of $16,900.
Okay, coming from committee, does it need a second? Have any questions?
Which job is that?
This is the, the big pump station sewer project for 94 and 52. This is one we had already selected and agreed to Petting Boards. This is just their pre-engineering proposal.
But it, it's gonna be a Phase 1, Phase 2 proposal?
They, they will be developing that through this preliminary engineering.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
I.
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 Mr. Chair votes, uh, next item?
Directing Staff to Work with VDOT on Solution to the Kittle Lane Tank Road Culvert Issue.
Okay, again, coming from committee, does it need a second? Any questions?
Is this the one I keep complaining about?
This is the one where VDOT dug out part of the pipe and we're gonna work with VDOT and see if the water department, excuse me, if the water department could help provide some pipe, if VDOT will install that to take care of that entrance and improve the road that comes up into the property, that gives to other properties that also serves our water tank.
Any other questions? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
I.
I.
Mr. Chair votes, uh, next item?
Approving the R&R Enterprises Permit and to Authorize the County Administrator to Sign.
Mr. Bear, you want to summarize this?
Yeah, R&R Enterprises, as you are aware, have been working with the county. At one point in time, they were talking about possibly activating a line and putting it into place to run directly into our sewer line. This is basically just a permit. They have a facility at their property there on Pepper's Ferry Road. They would be pumping out of that facility and bringing it either to our wastewater treatment plant or injecting into our line to come to us. This is just authorizing the permit. With that permit, there are certain parameters and checks and samples they have to be taking, and then based on those samples, if they exceed the guidelines or the limits of what they're supposed to be discharging, they would be charged surcharges for exceeding the BOD or the TSS in the process, but this just gives them the permit necessary to discharge into our wastewater system.
How do they bill for that?
How do they bill for that?
Yeah.
When, when they bring 10,000 gallons to us, whatever amount they're bringing to us, we will then be invoicing them for the regular sewer charges, and then it would be, any surcharge would be calculated on top of that based on the sample results.
But what they discharge into the line, if they drop it in a manhole, is that measured by them and they bill?
What they've got, they've got an, I don't remember the size tank, Mr. Chris, where I can remember like a 20,000 gallon tank, whatever, and basically, when their tank gets full, they'll pump and then come and discharge that, and it'll be based off of the volume out of their tank that they're, they're putting in there.
But I, I'm all for doing this because we need to handle our sewage, but if they're holding it, Mr. Ball, will it be septic when they give it to us?
Well.
No, they pre-treat it.
They're going through a pre-treatment process. They've got a treatment process they're going to, and then it would be going into this holding tank after that.
And that's the reason they take samples and assess it. If it exceeds limits, they get a certain charge for exceeding the limits off the pre-treatment.
So if, if they give us a charged septic sewer, they're gonna pay for what's gonna happen when it gets to the plant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Hear none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair votes aye. Next item?
And if I, I have one more comment to exactly what you said. One of the reasons why we're looking at discharging into, like at Progress Park, is given that dilution time for, instead of just dumping directly into the plant, it helps out in the process. It still is going to require the same surcharge because there's an additional treatment cost that goes with it.
Yeah, the slug will not get there as a slug. It'll be diluted.
Diluted.
Good to see. Thank you.
And last is recommends decommissioning Fort Chiswell Well Number Two and remove from the Health Department permit.
Again, come from committee, doesn't need a second, and I will ask Mr. Bear to summarize this while we're doing this.
Yeah, you all may remember, Fort Chiswell Well Number Two, we had some tests come back, and while they did not deem it to be surface water influenced, they said probably 10 or 15 years ago, probably would have just been deemed surface water influenced. Now, they don't deem it that. They did want us to put in some.
UV system.
Yeah, to, systems to treat the water, and in your package gives a summary of that report, but basically the cost associated with that was in the neighborhood of $200,000 just to put in the AV system and everything to do so. That does not guarantee that the well still may not come back in one year and test positive for E. coli or something like that and take it completely offline. It would cost us to buy water from the New River Regional Water Authority, a net difference of about $30,000 a year as opposed to using this well. So investing the minimum of what it would take to upgrade this well would probably be about six or seven years' worth of what it would take purchasing the water. During the cost-benefit analysis, the committee agrees with the recommendation of just going ahead and taking that well offline. Fort Chiswell Well Number One up above, it was taken offline 15 years ago or so, probably just a matter of time before this one comes off. So it would just, and it's what we've been doing over the last little bit. We'll just continue buying water from the New River Regional Water Authority and not worry about investing this much money into a well that may not be good in another year or two.
Where's this well at, Steve?
Oh, behind Brad, I mean, on Orion Lane.
Say no more.
Okay.
When you, when you take a well offline, we don't have to go to the expense of decommissioning and closing that well?
We do have to go through with the Health Department, decommissioning, getting it off of there and closing it out, yes.
You mean, you gotta actually plug the well?
We will do whatever they require. I do believe it'll probably start capping.
So there'll be some cost involved in that.
Yeah.
And it wasn't much cost. What'd he say, about $2,000, $2,500 to close the well?
Talking about wells, I noticed so far we hadn't talked about the bridge, the creek. We've got two wells on the other side of creek. Is that well at Cardville Heights still not online?
I believe it is online, yes.
Well, if we've got two wells servicing Maxima's tanks, we don't have an emergency. You know, other day, y'all told me it was an emergency. We called on, we had one well.
Which, which two wells we talking about?
Well, you got the Schoolhouse Well and the one at Cardville Heights. If both of those are still in service.
I believe it's just the Cardville Heights that's in service, yeah. I'll confirm with Don. I believe it's just the Cardville Heights that's in service, but I'll check with him and confirm.
Okay, but have we gotten anywhere on the go to a better price?
We, we have gotten a little bit of price differential, but not close to the level. We're still working with him. We haven't gotten the numbers back, but it was about a $10,000 or so decrease was all we were at right now.
And that is if they could use what was there already there on the bridge, if it wasn't hangers?
One rollers, two on the hangers. Just minor things.
So going with a support roller to carry the bottom of the pipe?
A single versus a double for movement, yeah.
How much of that is, how much that cost is insulation and re-insulation?
There was a change in the type of insulation. I don't remember exactly, but there was a credit for changing the type, but yes.
You know, I'll be picky about this, but if it goes back, is it going back specification-wise stainless steel so we don't have the same problem again in 20 years from the salt coming off the bridge and the dripping off the VDOT bridge? Are they going back with stainless or is it going back galvanized or DMO?
I don't believe it was stainless. Do you?
I don't think it was.
I don't think it was stainless. So we're still, we're still working on the price on it, and we'll come back hopefully by the next meeting with it.
Okay, we got a motion from the committee. Any other, any other comments or questions on closing the well number two? Hear none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair votes aye. Anything else from the Water Committee?
Not that I know of.
Okay, Budget Committee. Mr. Lester?
The Budget Committee met and recommends the following. First item is accepting the Violence Against Women's Act grant in the amount of $24,919.
Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions? Hear none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair votes aye. Next item?
Next item is approving a transfer of $10,000 from the Sheriff's Compensation Board Vacancy Savings to Vehicle Supplies and $800 to temporary personnel contingent upon Compensation Board approval.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I hate to say this, but.
I was getting ready to.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, Brian Ball, as a member of the West County Board of Supervisors, declare that pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act, excuse me, that regarding this matter of Budget Committee recommendation involving the West County Sheriff's Office, I have a personal interest because I'm a full-time employee of the West County Sheriff's Office, which will be affected by the matters to be discussed today, and I declare that I am able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thanks for the reminder, Stephen. I, Ryan Lawson, as a member of the West County Board of Supervisors, declare pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act regarding this matter of Budget Committee recommendation involving the West County Sheriff's Office, I have a personal interest because my husband is a full-time employee of the West County Sheriff's Office, which will be affected by the matters to be, to be discussed in our meeting today, and I declare that I am able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Okay, now, any other questions or comments? Hear none, we'll do, yes, Mr. Hill?
I heard what Charlie said, but what does it really mean? Is this money just being transferred from one budget item to the other?
It's vacancy savings as far as the money from the Compensation Board, if they allow him to move that money. Do you want to explain, Sheriff, to other, other positions in, within the department? It's not coming from the county's budget.
Well, it's just moving state money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hear none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair votes aye. Next item?
Next item is approving a transfer of $5,244 from the Commonwealth's Attorney Asset Forfeiture Account to furniture and fixtures for the purchase of new office furniture.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions? Hear none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair votes aye. Next County Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chairman, before I get into my report, if you all don't mind, I believe we have Ms. Ashley Edward here from West County Extension Office that is under our agenda new business, and she's patiently waited here for an hour.
Yes, I've seen her back there.
If you all don't care to adjust the agenda again, go ahead and take care of her issue.
Ms. Edward, just come right on up. Get you out of here.
Well, this has been exciting. It's fine. So, thank you for letting me come and present today. My main thing that I want to talk about is just giving you an extension update on my program in particular. I am a fairly new hire for the Extension Office in the county, and so I just wanted to kind of brief you all on kind of the projects that I've decided to devote my attention to. I am a commercial horticulture extension agent, so I don't know if you remember with Morris, who was in this job before me, and then Suzanne Slack, but, so I've kind of taken over that role. So I am a three-county agent, which is a little bit different than a lot of the agents that you're used to, so I'm not housed here in West County, but I do cover the county as well as Grayson and Carroll. I grew up in Carroll County, so I'm from there, and I live in Loudon, but, so I just finished up my first complete year with Extension in 2018, and, you know, being so, I decided had to choose what I would devote my attention to based on needs assessments and such with the growers in the county. And so being commercial horticulture all of my time has been mostly with commercial fruit and vegetable production. So depending on who reaches out to me, I've spent a lot of my time working on the brassica family, which is cabbage, broccoli, and greens. We have a lot of that in Carroll, more so than here, but I've also spent a lot of time with pumpkins. I'm sure as you well aware, we have the most pumpkins in the state of Virginia in this little area in Southwest of Virginia. I think we're topping 4,000 acres at this point. So a lot of my time is spent on pumpkins. I've done some pumpkin research this year, some variety trials, and particularly a lot of field day events with the Virginia Pumpkin Growers Association. So I anticipate working with that a lot more this coming year with my new role in that association. As well, I work with tree fruit production. Some of the biggest projects have been research opportunities with specialists from Virginia Tech. We've been working on relocating a parasitic wasp that can help take care of the sink bug problem, and that's, as you notice, you notice that in your houses as well, not just with farmers. So we're working on that, general orchard meetings, support for those growers, small fruit, whether it be berries or blueberries, stuff like that. In total in 2018, my number of contacts for commercial vegetable production and small fruit totaled 95. I do a lot of work with Christmas trees, particularly the Mount Rogers Christmas Tree Growers Association, so I don't know if you're familiar with them, but I'm working a lot with that. And I think my largest time commitment this year has definitely been with fresh produce food safety. With the help of some specialists from Virginia Tech and other Extension Agents, we went and developed a new grower manual, which is kind of a step-by-step grower-written-out plan of how I'm going to do food safety on my farm. This is, they say that GAAP, if you've heard of USDA, Good Agricultural Practices, harmonized GAAP, these are market-driven audits that the growers, depending on who they want to sell to, they will have to conduct these third-party audits. So they have to develop a plan, implement strategies, and then get a formal audit on their farm to show that they're actually following that plan that they've developed in order just to access new markets. So this has been, in all my conversations of what do you need the most, this has come up the most often. So the vast majority of my time was spent helping growers write this manual, prepare for these audits, and get that access. Another thing is the Food Safety Modernization Act. This is a federal law that was passed in 2015, and a lot of our growers in all of my localities have started to come into compliance with this law. Depending on the size of your farm and what produce you sell will depend on what date your compliance date is. However, most of our small to mid-scale farmers are gonna be in compliance either last year or coming up this, this year or next. So I've been having to do a lot of grower trainings and getting people prepared for complying with this law. It's different than the GAPS and the harmonized GAPS that are, we say, that they're optional, but market-driven, but this one is not optional. This is depending on how much you sell, you will have to have this federal inspection. Luckily, it isn't the FDA that's gonna be coming. VDOTX has been tasked with this job, so that, that is a good thing. But I've worked with growers on preparing for that. In 2018, my total contacts for food safety were 260. So you can see that, that's been a big issue. I do a lot of work locally, however, this is kind of a state-driven effort. So we do, I do trainings with other agents in different counties as well. And those were the largest projects that I undertook, as well as a little bit of youth programming. With each county, I try to get in on some ag education days, some sort of outreach with youth. I've been in some school programs. I've worked with some school gardens at various elementary schools, as well as the farmer's market. I do some of the Saturdays at the Woodville Farmer's Market with the kids' cooking series and some other hands-on stuff that I've done. And then lastly, it's not technically in my responsibility area, but I do help to serve whenever we get questions about gardens or home landscape, plants, trees, stuff like that. If it's something that I have the opportunity to help out with, I try to make sure that I help those folks as well. So that's the very large and quick overview of my 2018. So I just really want to thank you all for your support for Extension, not just for my program, but for the organization as a whole. We really appreciate it, and we couldn't do it without county support. And so if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer some. Yes.
Sounds like you're real busy, but could you find time to work with our Apex Authority and look into feasibility of us having a pumpkin festival since you're already a pumpkin expert?
Yeah.
There's one up in Ohio, Pickway County. That's an economic-driven event. They bring in so much tourist money there, it goes on for a week. All of it centered around the pumpkin.
Yeah. Carroll, Hillsville started one. It's like, I think the one they had, I briefly attended it last year, had a schedule conflict, but it's like, theirs is a one-day thing, and they have like stuff for the kids, and I have, I've got some ideas and stuff, so I'd be happy to help out with that if you could just, I'll make sure that I leave you with some contact information or something.
Are you familiar with the Apex and what it's for?
Uh-uh.
I guess that's our fault.
Play it on Matthew.
Yeah, we bring no Matthew.
It's a regional concept for agriculture, and we've got some people here from their, from that authority. But this thing with 4,000 acres, it seems like we're at the threshold that pumpkins can, can make money for the community, along with the pumpkin farmers and the people that rent the farmers, but it's gotta have some nucleus to get started, and it seems like to me this is something could start with some help from Extension working through the authority.
Yeah. I'll, I'll talk with Matthew. I'll get in on that. I will.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anybody have any other questions for Ms. Edwards? Thank you for all you do. I know you are very busy, and this board, you know, agriculture is one of our big, you know, industries in the county, and we appreciate the Extension Agency and the agents, you know, we really support them.
Yes, thank you very much, and I will, I'll get in on that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. Y'all have a wonderful rest of your day.
If her and Kelsey get together to do something, I want to see it, because it's just gonna be.
We tried to do a little bit, but unfortunately, I'm trying to do it.
Okay, we've been sitting here for about an hour and 10 minutes, so let's take a five-minute break. We're in recess for five minutes. I'll call us back to order. Mr. Bear, you done with your report?
He had about four or five other things. I think that's a good thing. Yep, you're done.
The, first thing, Mr. Chairman, is just the Enterprise Zone Amendment, just to let you know that the, it has been approved, no action needed. Y'all have already taken action on it, but. Uh, y'all have already taken action on it, but it is approved and in place and it's basically retroactive to the previous year. Uh, the second is a, definitely a, a bit of very good news. Um, I put in here just a little bit of project scorecard. Commonwealth Transportation Board met last week. The first scorings were reported, um, to the, um, Commonwealth Transportation Board on the smart scale applications. Uh, during that presentation, uh, this project was actually pointed out in particular for the improvement in economic development score. Um, economic development, this had either the second or third highest score in the entire state for economic development. Uh, as you can see on page 95 of the agenda, it is, uh, number 33 project out of 44 in the district. It is number 44 out of 433 statewide. It is a request of $12,857,000 in smart scale funds. And currently with the rankings and recommendations that have come out, it is recommended for funding in smart scale, uh, at their meeting, which will be coming up, uh, around May of this year. We need to make certain that we are continuing to stay in touch with the Commonwealth Transportation Board members and support this, and we need to go and show our support of this, uh, in case anything is, is hedging or changing on this at our, when that public hearing is up. But this is, uh, excellent. I appreciate Mr. Vaughn's help, uh, Mr. Donnie Cook and the staff at VDOT and the, uh, outside consultants that they have working on this project, uh, were great assistance in, in getting this out, but this is, is very good news for our project.
At the end, and it, for it to score 9.1 is real good and our other one, .9.
Right. So, at that, it was, it was good to get a bit of bright news to go on with that. Uh, next item is just on the Apex Center. As you all know, you took a tour out there last week. Um, where we currently stand on the Apex Center, um, RGM has met all of the life safety building requirements, all of those things. Um, as I previously emailed you, a certificate of occupancy has been issued on it. Um, I would, uh, request at this meeting, if the board would just take action to accept substantial completion, authorize staff to finish the paperwork. Mr. Vaughn has prepared all the paperwork and basically it includes the testing, the certifications, and it includes the punch list of items, uh, that go to the contractor, but it just indicates substantial completion has been met.
I entertain a motion to approve the staff's recommendation.
I made a motion.
Have a second.
A second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion. Here none will do a roll call vote, Mr. Vaughn.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Um, secondly, as you are aware, uh, the only thing that held up, uh, our event from happening last week, um, was the bleachers. Um, I've been down there every day since we, uh, met last week reviewing with the two gentlemen sitting here in the back have, uh, pretty much every time I've been there, it seems like they've been there as well, uh, meeting with them. Uh, all bleacher seats and, and benches and everything are in. Um, the, uh, they are finalizing the fencing and the railings and the things like that around the process.
Cleaning.
So, uh, the cleaning, they indicate they hope to have done by the north side done, possibly by the end of the day or so. Um, they do think it'll take them all the way up to Friday doing all their final cleaning and, and all of that, but, uh, um, it does appear that, uh, Mr. Jordan and them are, uh, are making the attempts to make certain we don't run into the same problems this week. So, um...
No, we do not need to cancel anything else.
So I don't know if, if either of those gentlemen have any comments they want to make to it or Mr. Hale, he's, uh, been out there quite a few times and I've been out there looking at it as well.
Mr. Litten or...
I think progress is commencing well, particularly with the cleaning. The work's been progressing at a good pace and they're on target. I just checked in this morning with the fellow, see if they needed any equipment or any help. They said everything was good, but I intend to make a brief stop today.
Did they get their pipes bent yesterday?
We're working on it. Yes, we're making good progress with that. Brought the machine over, handrail, fabrication, all in place.
Mr. Litten, did they power spray the seating or did they get it cleaned up pretty good?
They're using a combination of an industrial cleaner and wet vacuum. In, in that process, they're scrubbing it well.
Okay.
And I asked about, just so everyone will know, the deck, they'll call mail unfinished without a special treatment on it, it won't shine up as good as your regular BNC. That standard, any facility you bid, that mail finish will not look real bright where you actually walk. The beaches where you sit are cleaning up very nicely.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I can say, I went down there yesterday and I was down there Sunday too.
Sunday also.
Sunday also too. And, uh, what they had, they had started on one section and what they cleaned, uh, the aluminum and the seats looked brand-new and they were starting on the, the fold-up seats and they were spraying them with some kind of green-looking stuff and, and I went back down there yesterday and they were, they looked pretty good. So I think it's...
Are they removing the numbers and putting new numbers on the seats or no numbers or...
They have not done any of that.
They were moving the numbers. There wasn't any numbers on the ones they cleaned.
That's good because I just don't want people saying, "Well, look, the board supervisors can't even count. They don't even know their numbers are right."
I, I know it's cold outside, but do you have any idea where the bush hog is and will the tractor start?
Tractor will start because they use it here on, uh, pushing the, um, um, snow. Uh, the bush hog is probably, hmm, I don't know if it's at the Bailey shop or not.
If we could get that, um, three Celeste diesel mode while I've got that box blade down there, there's a little bit of work needs done on that auxiliary lot.
Okay.
And we're running out of time, but if, if they could get there, it's supposed to be warmer tomorrow and the next day and...
Supposed to be raining tomorrow.
We, we really need to get that lot bush hogged. They need to get it bush hogged. And while I've got that big box blade there, we can dress that stone up and put a little bit more stone. I think that's an authority function to get a little bit more stone in that auxiliary lot entrance and then drag it up with that box blade. You've got seven acres of parking there, so, but...
Yeah, Bill had a group come out there and they did some work last week. Uh, they had some concerns about the drainage ditches, but if you'll take a look and work with him on that.
I looked there and they still had the three pipes to install.
Yeah, and what's...
No, I'm talking about the auxiliary parking at the top of the hills where it needs mowed.
Mr. Umberger's.
Oh, Mr. Umberger's.
Have we got any kind of transportation from the auxiliary parking lot to the building?
Uh, we do not, but Mr. Hale has been working, uh, understand bleacher builders have some type of, uh, contraption that was used in some other locations for hauling people from parking lots to the arena, uh, that we may be able to...
That would only happen in late summer. That's not something that's going to happen...
Yeah.
...in the next two months. And, and, uh, I'd rather not call them contraptions. They're transporters that NASCAR uses and Disney uses a shuttle. Uh, and I was just talking to Mr. Lester and I, I haven't twisted Mr. McCrobbitt's arm yet, but, uh, as yet, uh, if we can get those things given to us, they need refurbished. Uh, they, they probably need new wheels and tires, but you can pull them with a farm tractor, you can pull them with many different things. They have a ball-type hitch, they have electric brakes, uh, and I think they haul 20 to 25 people at a pop. And from that lower parking lot or that upper parking lot, it would be a huge wow factor for people that don't jog like you do. You, you'll pay your car to run down there, but some of us would hobble down there and, and maybe the sheriff would rather ride too. But, you know, it, having that as part of the facility offering would just be a pretty big thing. They'll need a paint job and they'll need some cleaning up, depending on what do we put a strobe light on them or not, which would be highly recommended to have a strobe light on them for safety. But, but they're free and, you know, I prefer to be called pretty instead of cheap.
And I would, you know, make a comment and Debbie told me this last night after we got back from the meeting and stuff, she was looking at Facebook. I don't look at it much, but there was, uh, 400 and some positive comments and, uh, over a thousand shares last night about the event coming up, Apex Center, so, um, we, and you know, there's, there's support out there for the center.
The, um, on the, and, and Mr. John, I understand the area you're talking about is the rented lot that the authority has.
Umberger Lot.
Umberger Lot, okay, not there. Um, the, um, other thing is the, obviously as, as final excavation's going on the outside, RGM is, uh, as weather permits, has the entire, all the dirt they moved out to smooth the road down through there and, and put in the lower parking lot. Uh, Mr. Vaughn is accepting proposals right now and we've gotten some, some, uh, good feedback, including from the rail company that's doing some rail repair. We're interested in looking at going ahead and starting doing our grading, uh, get our bids in for our grading and do the lower parking lot so we can have that in, um, as quickly as possible. So, um, hopefully, uh, if, uh, the bleacher contractor finishes everything up, um, we will not have any issues with, uh, holding the, the rodeo event this weekend.
Uh, Bill, is RGM, um, that west end parking lot, the road, the gravel road that goes all the way around it, have, have they scraped that down and, and packed it?
I don't think he's put a roller on it. He's gone around and pulled it.
It's got gravel on it around now.
I know it's got gravel, but it had some, it hadn't been leveled out and packed.
And the entrance, of course, we've got, uh, C.R. Henderson to get the entrance cleaned up to access that one. We have 100 feet on the entrance. We have three drainage pipes to take the drainage off of that, sitting in the bottom.
Yep. But anyway, unless you all have any other questions, uh...
I just have one quick question. When do we plan to take the sign down that says that it was supposed to be open November?
They were working on a, uh, new sign.
We got a meeting tonight at 6:00. We'll address that with Pam. Um, about Pam had ordered a sign. You could put up there.
Yeah.
I think it would look a lot better.
Hopefully we'll be taking that one down and putting it in there.
And, and the town has agreed to allow the authority for 45 days to, to use their directional display signs, like the VDOT, uh, signs, so they can, can put in there, uh, and, and indicate Apex ahead or things like that. So we do plan on using those.
While, while you're on that, are you going to be there and we'll discuss that tonight at the meeting, where, where to put those signs?
Oh, yes.
And they will be available this week?
Yeah, yeah, the Apex Authority, I mean, the, uh, town indicated they were ready, they, they could come and pick those up. All the, all the authority's got to do is just execute. Um, y'all voted on the agreement last week. All we got to do is just get the signed agreement over to the town.
Oh, for clarification, the county does own that right-of-way at East Street, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So that's piece of county land that's exposed to the interstate if you want to put one there for southbound traffic or North 81, depending on which road you're on. And then if you're coming up, are you going south on 81? If it's the pleasure of, of the board or, or the authority tonight, that the property that Bill Cole is developing down there on Lee Highway would give off a good exposure, but I think they all decide what they want on the sign and their boat would get you off at 77.
Yeah.
But then what do we do with them? What, what are we going to do to, to tell people to get on Ready Mix Road and, and get up there to the entrance?
Uh, that was one of the items we talked about in one of the previous Apex Authority meetings and, and one item with Mr. Krusen was what directional signs and even, even using the, I'll call them campaign-type signs just to stick in the ground temporarily to, to direct people up there as well, to just help people find the center right now in the process. Uh, I don't know if he's put anything together on it or not.
So we'll find that out tonight. Thank you.
The rodeo people spoke to Pam, but they're going to do some of that themselves.
I did have one more quick question. I was going to wait to bring this up at our next meeting when I had a chance to ask a few more questions to help understand it myself, but there's a lot of talk in the community about who's to blame for the delayed opening. Is it RGM? Is it the bleacher builders? Is it a combination? What's the answer to that?
Well...
Or is there a quick answer to that?
You know, the, I mean, the delay from November, Mr. Hale has addressed it in the meetings before, uh, the original substantial completion, or completion date without any weather delays or anything else was in November. Um, there has been, uh, tremendous delays, a lot of them weather-related, some of them not weather-related in the process. As for the event last weekend, um, the, uh, the primary delay was, uh, I mean, that was being because of the bleachers. Uh, they, they could have, uh, they did reach substantial completion, um, and had the bleachers been done, that event would have been ongoing, so...
But that wasn't on RGM.
That's not on RGM. That's, the bleachers are just an entirely, uh, separate contract on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address that from a contract administration, which has been my life's work, and Mr. Vaughn can bear this out. Um, this project has had quite a few architectural-driven change orders of things that were left out either in the grading side or in the architectural side. Normally, when you have those, the general contractor always asks for an exorbitant amount of extension days. Because we had a local contractor, they haven't done that. And I'm calling you, Bill, to, uh, give a number, and it's just off the top of your head. Had we have got, had an out-of-state contractor, we're taught none of our money left the county. It stayed here with local subs, local suppliers. But if we'd had an out-of-state contractor, say from New York or from Richmond or from Charlotte, every change order would have had a request for more days. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're, we have 15, we're at 15, and so far we have not adjudicated any time realizing that we would balance the goals on the final or facilitation change order. That would be for the building. We still have the SWIP to complete, so that time would be added also to contract.
Now you're using acronyms that are over our heads here.
Stormwater pollution plan that the BEQ makes us do, we still have the, the completion of that over the hill to convert the sediment traps and basins into regular stormwater management. So all this time in the actual contract would be, uh, be added up to final completion of the whole contract. As we did today, you set the substantial completion on the facility, the primary facility, and of course the handicap parking lot because that was covered. It's the, uh, we still have the stormwater management to complete, so all that time would also be added in, so to your point, that's no, no fault of the contractor, that's just weather problem. Can't get over the hills too wet.
And to help you with answering those questions from a contract administration, that's one facet of it. The other is in the contract documents, it says relate to National Weather Service historical records. And what have you seen on the news about the amount of rainfall we've had since August? If you compile those with these days that weren't asked, we would probably be in maybe a month to six months of parameters that this delay could have been based on weather and change order extensions. So that's a real good thing to explain to people that have a concern.
Yeah, and, and I completely understand weather and that things come up. I'm personally just happy that it's finally open, but when citizens come to me and complain, you know, why, why is this being put on bleacher builders when they were there in November or December to do the bleachers, but RGM wasn't ready for them? wasn't ready for them then? You know, a lot of people are angry with RGM, so I get the complaints.
RGM, RGM had the floor ready, floor was clean, floor was caulked, floor was prepared in plenty of time by RGM for bleacher builders to, RGM was out of bleacher builder play.
Yeah, that's what I don't understand, who's saying that?
I don't think the rainfall had anything to do with bleacher builders' play.
No.
And that was, when we were up there, I've only been up there twice, when was the first time we went up there?
I don't remember when it was. November, I think.
November, I think it was.
Mr. Vaughn, I agree with you, but.
Well, let me finish first and then.
Well, right now, I'm agreeing with you.
I may rule it. But back in November, when I was up there, bleacher builders could have been in there then.
And. That's, that's a problem. They came in, they presented that frame, they built that frame, but then they either went to some other jobs or did some other things. They lost a tremendous amount of time right there that we would love to have back and we'd love to have them working on it, but yes. His, Mr. Jordan, that I've talked to extensively about this, just keeps saying, we, I misjudged the fabrication times, what he told me. He said, you know, we're fabricating these, we're building these, and it's, and it's just taking more time to set these up and build them than what I had allowed time to do so. So, he's bleacher builders, he's the expert, I think he should have had a better idea on his timeframe, he should have had them up in place.
Yeah, and over the holidays, I just think he let the crews go.
Yeah.
And didn't ask them to come back until the first of the year.
I mean, you know, I understand that it's been delayed as far as the open dates. The part that bothers me is that we had to cancel the event.
That does.
And that's where, you know.
Absolutely.
Well, that I agree with.
That's the part that bothers me. In that breath, I hope that SMG has made some kind of concessions for this rodeo this weekend as far as the traffic, because my biggest fear is, because I think it's gonna be well attended. My biggest fear is, last week, we had to cancel the event. So, we have a first event, which is gonna be rather large, and then if traffic's all messed up up there, that's gonna be another black eye. I'll be honest with you, I've not been impressed with what I've seen from SMG. I have some concerns. Hopefully, if they can get a full time manager that is gonna stay here, that they'll be a little more enthusiastic.
Agreed.
Any other?
You were talking about the holidays. I had heard that they wanted to work during the holidays and they were not allowed in the building. Okay. Well, I just, I had heard that, that's the reason I wanted to ask.
I'd heard that too and I asked.
Oh, you can also hear that it doesn't have toilets in it, Gene.
I know.
And you can also hear that it has no heat.
I know better than that though, because I've seen that personally.
And I do wanna thank you all for clarification, because you do hear a lot and there is a lot going around. And like I said, I am very thankful for all the work you all have done and that all of that's behind us and we're moving forward and I hope it's very successful.
Yeah, and the people that's called me and asked me, you know, about, you know, why wasn't the bleachers ready and stuff and, you know, I've explained to them, you know, especially around the outside, the weather and stuff, and then bleacher builders just, you know, messed up on their time. They thought they could do it in a short amount of time than what they did and, in my opinion, I don't think Mr. Jordan really, he finally realized he had to get more people in there than what he had in there.
Mr. Chairman, I think we'd be negligent to not address this. From the concept 15 years ago and to present, and Mr. Lester's been involved with the Economic Development Committee, this is an economic development project and Mr. Vaughn got close to doing the right thing there. When we have these two day events, we're gonna collect taxes on meals, we're gonna collect taxes on the rooms tax, and this thing will draw events here that will give tax revenue to the county and to the town immediately with all your two day events. If you just take the people that participate and they stay in a motel and they eat while they're here, and that's one of the reasons I'd like to see us track a little closer how much more revenue we get in from food and rooms tax over the next two, three to four years when I'm not gonna be here, but y'all should see those sources of revenue go up. Now, everybody would like to see some more motels and restaurants in the county and that's economic development, which is totally different than industrial development. If we spend a lot of money getting a factory and jobs, I'm all for that, but it takes four or five years for the county to start getting revenue. If we do economic development with small businesses, that's the same year that it happens, we start getting revenue within the same tax year. So, that's why economic development needs our attention and these kind of projects to improve economic development.
And Mr. Hale, what you said, you know, I brought this up before and I shared with Stephen and Matthew, prime example, you know, SMG needs to be out here partnering with these county hotels. You know, they let the promoter of the motorcycle, I think it was, I think it was the motorcycle event that was canceled. You know, they went out on their own and partnered with hotels in town. That's not helping us out. SMG needs to be out there making these partnerships and, you know, and I think Matthew agreed and I don't know if he's talked with Mr. Krusen, I don't know if y'all have talked with Mr. Krusen about that, but somebody needs to put a bug in here, SMG's ear, you know, you need to be out here so when these promoters call, say, hey, you know, we've got a partnership with this hotel at exit 80, you know, this is my contact, give them a call so that we can reap those tax money. I don't, nothing against Towne Wiffle, but I don't really wanna drive more meals and lodging taxes to them.
Well, one of the things that you mentioned there, and I'm a behavior, I've never spent a lot of money going to shows or going to concerts. Maybe I should have, but I haven't. But if our county motels will furnish a shuttle service up there, it does two things. It attracts people to stay in the county motels, it takes our parking problem away and the ones, they can get people there safer, better with a shuttle. We've never had anything going on here that needed a shuttle service from the motels. There's no shuttle that runs the mountain in our airport because you can't fly anywhere when you get there. But with vents up there with these 16 passenger vans and things, I think we ought to promote the idea to the Comfort Inn and to the Holiday Inn Express and those people, put a shuttle in, put it online, we got a shuttle to the Apex. They will fill up quickly because concert people, event people that go to these things appreciate a shuttle service. Most of our motels are within two miles of the place.
Okay. Moving round along, do you have anything else, Mr. Ver?
Uh, next item is just.
Mr. Liddon?
Just briefly to Brian's point, we received a spreadsheet from SMG on the 16th, correct? We were reviewing the motels in the Ken and Wilkston were on that list, but that list of contacts, Buddy was on the committee, Kathy Patterson, myself, along with the representative of SMG, we made those contacts, I asked a year ago for the spreadsheet for initial contacts, more information to proceed, the follow ups all the way down the line, contacts, email and so forth. It might be, Ken motel, the rest were contacted. There was some interest, but not overly positive at this point in time. At the same time, SMG is gonna go to personnel change because that's our contact person that left the employ of SMG, I don't know about July or August of this year, and that's when we had to start over, there's basically been no follow up from there in mid April last year, which we're gonna address that directly with SMG, to your point.
Next item, Stephen.
Next item on the agenda is just the, I put you all the information sheet from the capital improvement plan, input sessions that the planning commission did. Basically, we'll just, you know, I'll highlight a few of the things here and just, items go into it, obviously, under education, you've got several comments about new schools, sure maintenance and renovation of the existing schools and some items in there about security. And I will be, after I've shared this with you all, I'll just share those, this comments over to the school board and let them know about it, just want you to see it. Economic development, economic development, sort of two of these mixed in here together, but you've got trail development, high speed wifi, recreation, more bike trails, ball fields, talk about the Ager Park renovations, and there's lots of different items in here that are talked about. Infrastructure, fire training facilities, internet services, county wifi, high speed internet mentioned several times, ATV trails, mountain biking, hiking trails, river tourism, post out there, internet access. I just, I started highlighting some of the items that we're seeing over and over, obviously, internet access is one and obviously, we know of one grant that's trying to go in already and continue to look at others, but just sharing that with you all as we work on developing the capital improvements plan for this upcoming year, just items to have in mind and anything that you all would like for staff to follow up more closely on or work into the plan, we'll continue to do so. And the last item I've got, Mr. Chairman, is just 2019, 2020 budget parameter discussion. We're getting ready to send out our budget letters to all the department heads, constitutional officers and other departments that we fund. Typically, at the beginning of this process, we just take an opportunity to see for the next fiscal year, what budget items in particular is the board of supervisors have interest in, what some sort of goals or parameters. Last year, you know, I think the main ones were school construction item, the school resource officer's items, that was some of the main things we addressed. I've just listed, you know, a little bit of revenue expenditure, some capital expenditures and some other items here just for discussion, but I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you wanna go around the table and get any board members inputs on it or go through the list here, how you would like to proceed?
Well, we can go around the table, I mean, we can start with Mr. Vaughn, if you see anything on here that's not on here or anything you'd like to change.
I just wanna know if I always have to go first?
You're District One.
I think, I won't hear everybody else's idea, I don't wanna give you my secrets. You know, one thing that we've talked, talked about, we actually talked about it, I guess in budget committee, it's listed on there, but just to let the other board members know, you know, we've kicked around, sitting down and looking at these salaries and taking care of our in-house people and I made the suggestion that, you know, we have a work session during budget time where we look at everybody's salaries and I think that needs to be our concentration this year or one of, one of our major concentrations. That's.
I, I'll agree with you, Mr. Vaughn, and you know, I'd like to see, get our budget done and, you know, look at what we have left of what we could do as far as, I guess, pay, adjusting the pay scales in each department and even some in the, in some of the constitutional officers that we support some positions in the, in the treasurer and commissioner of revenue.
I'd like to comment on the pay too. I'm glad you brought up pay and we ought to talk about it, since I'm a lame duck or crippled duck, I'm gonna bring this up and make the issue. It's long past the time that we give supervisors a raise. I'm gone, so it won't affect me. But for the time it takes to do the committee work, the pay for supervisors is ridiculous. Stephen, we can't use the model of what they get paid in Blaine County or what they get paid in Grayson County because the workload's not the same. We're a hub of activity that if supervisors do their job, it takes a lot of time and you're just a real pain about having committee meetings. You know, we'd rather like to have a committee day and just get them all over with on one day and I bet you would too.
I would love to.
But it's not structured that way. And Mr. McRoberts and I, if we've got a committee meeting in the middle of the day, it's strapped to day. So, if we're gonna ask people to serve, you at least need to show them the appreciation of paying them a little bit and have more food involved and quit baiting people, a box of crackers. And we, and Stephen's done a great job, he feeds much better than Mr. Dalton did. But I've worked in counties all over the state that anytime they get together, there's food on the table. It don't happen in West County. I mean, we don't, we don't spend any money for snacks or, it's a big deal for us to get a piece of cold pizza in here.
We're frugal.
Well, I like frugal, but you gotta feed the people that turn the wheel and you.
We, now Martha got us a $5 pizza when we had that 12 hour budget meeting last year. I mean, it was like the Hunger Games, we had to fight over the slots. You know, it's made the struggle stand weak.
But seriously, I wish the budget committee would put it on the agenda to look at raising supervisors to a meaningful number or do away with it, just quit playing games with what you've asked for.
Why don't we do away with it and do it for nothing?
Yeah, I mean, we're doing it for nothing now. If you put the hours in, you're making about 35, 40 cents an hour.
I doubt if I'm making that.
Well, Scott does better than that. But I, I know you can do that and the parameter, I'm not saying, start paying what Fairfax does, 70,000 and a stamp and a vehicle for everybody, but there's gotta be some place of, I don't know what they pay in Montgomery County, but I know that they have a bigger workload than we do. But it's gotta be some way that y'all can come up with a recommendation, let's get this dog out of the closet and beat on it a little bit and see if we can't pay supervisors starting. I guess most of y'all would feel better if you deal with it after the next election. So, I'll be the guy that says, let's talk about it and y'all can vote on it after the next election or whoever's here can vote on it after the next election.
I will mention, that was one of the things I was, beginning of this year, Mr. Hale, my thoughts were the same. I wanted to look at our committee review and talk to the committee members about possible changes of. changes of trying to get these down to fewer days for the committee meetings. Now, it's difficult because Mr. Horni's timeframe has got to be between 9:30 and 1:30 or whatever the timeframe is.
Well, if we paid him enough, he wouldn't have to ride the bus.
You know, whether it's, you know, early morning on some of the committees, but it can help out staff as well trying to get these down to a more condensed schedule, but we also have those that, you know, work other jobs and just, we'll talk to each of the committees and see if we can look at combining any of those because I would like to make some changes on that as well.
Well, I like what Mr. Volk said. For much too long, West County has been a training school. We train people and then they move on for better wages. And that's at just about every level. If you're not rooted here and got family here, this is a training school. Start giving rings or wages. Give them a ring when they graduate and leave.
And, you know, we're not the only, you know, locality facing this too. I mean, they're facing it all over the state as, you know, trying to retain people and hire new people. I mean, right now, we've got two water positions open. We have two openings in the treasurer's office, I think we still do.
So personnel, and then Mr. Hale brought up board of supervisors, so that's, that's one of the focuses for this year, okay?
We've seen the light in the last three or four years that tourism can be profitable. You and I have talked at length, we've all talked, but we haven't done anything. We have a capability for economic development, tourism to, that old European saying of one hand washes the other. Tourism and economic development should hold hands and wash each other. The eleventh commandment, tempers are this for eight years that I've been here, pick the Yankee dollars. Get them off the interstate, show them something historical or entertainment wise, tourism dollars, wish them well and get them back on the interstate after we've picked their pocket a little bit. But with the people we've got traveling through here and with our vast history that goes back to the 1760s, we haven't utilized that. We haven't utilized the river. We haven't utilized our waterways. Reed Creek can handle canoes, it can handle kayaks. We have a great fishing facility in Cripple Creek that hadn't been highlighted. Six years ago, we took an effort, went to Richmond, that people from Carolina can come and buy a one-day fishing license to trout fish on Cripple Creek. That's something the county did, but we haven't capitalized. If we do a little bit of advertising that people in Winston, Charlotte, Greensboro can bring a business client up here and not have to buy a full year's license, they can buy a one-day license, right? That passed. How many operations have we got now of people pay to fish on Cripple Creek?
Two that I know of.
As I said, there's at least two that I know of. There's, there's one that does it a little bit part-time.
The Cedar Springs Sportsman's Lodge and that group, it's.
You got Cedar Springs Sportsman's Lodge and you got the Blue Springs Trout Fish, but then you got, Todd Busey does a little bit of that at his place.
There ought to be some effort from the county to help promote those businesses because it brings those dollars to our area. We talked at length when Mr. Dalton was here, we have a perfect opportunity to set up a driving trail to all the original furnaces, just like the Lee Retreat Trail. They've got these units now that you pull up, little three or four parking space, you turn your radio on to 16, what is Stephen, 1610 or something?
Yep.
And the thing comes on and tells you what happened there and what historic significance. It'd be, I think, achievable to go to these landowners that own these old furnace sites, regardless of the disrepair, they were there, they are what built the iron trade. They were the people that polluted the river almost to extension, extension. But that driving trail brings people. They spend some time in the county. We need to help promote up the river to where we have more small businesses on the river. Austinville's a perfect example. You get people off the interstate, get them over to Austinville, they can buy a postage stamp and some lime and a funeral. We ought to try to promote more small business along the river and capitalize on that great opportunity that new river has given us and the other blue, what did you call them, blue trails?
Yep, blue ways.
Blue ways. It's just, it's just laying there asking, develop me. Wouldn't be very expensive, do they, would it seem?
No.
Thank you. You want me to hush now again?
Yeah, I was getting ready to tell you too. Charlie?
Between Mr. Volk and Mr. Hale, they've hit my topics is salary and tourism.
That's awesome.
Yeah, under the emergency services, this year, I'd really like to dig deep with the emergency services. We've got a really good start with the fire department with the two new trucks. Hopefully, we have big plans for the rescue. And then as far as the sheriff's office goes, I know I have to tread lightly because I do have my conflict with them, but I want to, I want to look at what comes out of the PAF. And I'm not just saying this because the sheriff's here, but, you know, we need to look at what comes out of it. It's uniforms, for instance, everything inflation, everything's so much higher. So really want to dig deep with that.
Would you just say we want to take more money out of the PAF?
No.
Corey?
I have a lot I can say. This is my 10th year going on. I come up here with the intention that I could help the citizens in the lower end of this county try to get most of them a building from the senior citizens and the young kids being young. And so far, I'm O and one, which means nothing.
Well, you got Shaffey.
And I am going to try my best to help this year some way, some half. Get ready, Stephen.
That's your warning.
Corey, I don't know if you read through, but I did notice there was a couple of comments from your end of the county about a library. I don't know if it was two or three, I didn't count it. I know it was repetitive.
It's, to me, it's like if they're in another county, they may be better off if you ask the county, they take care of, look to me like down there, about as well as we I think it's time that we show them people down there that we appreciate them just as well as we do people we do in Westfield, out in the whole river. They pay taxes too.
Have we, have we surplus the property in Beran Spring?
I have a meeting one day this week with the surveyor. He has completed his survey and we are meeting to review the property lines and discussions so we can proceed from there. He, Mr. Hurt sent me, Mr. Tate, Bradley Tate, sent me an email last week that he had completed his survey and here's where the property lines were, and we'll go through those.
And also, I have talked with some people down that way that they have a piece of
property that they will sell to us to be able to be able to.
You know, that would be my suggestion is to use the proceeds of that and put back into the community.
Yeah, I don't think everybody knows as much about that property, Corey. If it's appropriate, we're in public session, I think if all the board members knew exactly what we're talking about here, it could be a general opinion to support acquisition of that adjoining property and start that ball. I support it 110% that, and that's a growth area. We don't have a lot of utilities down there, but by golly, we've got water now.
Yeah, we've got water. Thank the Lord.
And some days, they may be able to go to indoor plumbing, but it's, it's, it's time to start thinking ahead and planning ahead, so put that in your agenda, please.
Is that all, Corey?
That's all.
Gene?
I think everything's pretty much been covered. My main thing is I don't want to have to raise taxes. I think it's something we all want to.
Well, that's my all for the upcoming year, but.
Well, guys, now, that's why we're picky with the treasurer and the commissioner. Our, our tax collections are going up. And some of these things are revenue positive if we take the initiative and make them happen. Progress can be positive progress to leap into the 21st century kicking and squalling and make them revenue positive. And that's why Stephen's got a good education and should figure that out to where it's a positive thing to do something new and progressive instead of being a negative thing. Because when my kids are growing up, you know, if they tell them you can't do something, they said, why? Well, sometimes we ought to ask ourselves, we can't do something, we ought to let us say to ourselves, why can't we do it? As long as it's revenue positive, I believe in the citizenry enough to invest some money to have a revenue positive thing. It's economic scale that business goes to revenue. You don't build another factory unless you know that factory can pay for itself. And the same thing with government. I'm not for throwing any money away, but if we can get a revenue positive program going like Corey's talking about, I think we ought to be looking at it and planning for the future.
You know, I just don't want the board to, you know, the loose side of, we are in a good economy. You know, we are collecting more, more revenue in certain places, but, you know, I think we need to keep looking every year at our, at what we're taking in and what we're spending out.
You've been spending too much time in Richmond.
But, you know, we just, we just need to, don't need to overdo it here, you know, in my opinion. We still need to look at what we're taking in, adjust our, our revenue forecast and our budget, just like we've been doing it, you know? That's why we're in the, we're in the shape that we're in now, good fiscal shape. You know, the one thing, you know, I agree with Joe on tourism. I don't think that we're getting the word out. I know we got the brochures and stuff and, you know, I've brought this up just about every year as far as the, you know, we got thousands and thousands of people that stay in West County every year. And I think we need to partner with the hotels, come up with a, a video that they can play at the hotels that just runs a loop showing what, you know, tourism and what we have to offer here in West County. And I think that's cheap and, and I mean, you talk about, you know, you see counties, you know, on Channel 7, even out-of-state counties advertising in Virginia as far as tourism. But, you know, you're talking about big bucks when you start putting stuff over the, over television and do more, you know, on, on the internet, on the, on the web as far as advertising. But I think we can get a big, a big boost in tourism, you know, if we just had a partner with the hotels here in West County and in the county and in Whipple is running a tourism video through the hotels.
I'd like to comment about tourism one more time there. We've got the bulk in lead mines and Fort Chisel District. Stephen, you know this better than anybody. I don't know of any trails in our end of the county. That trail brochure does a lot of good, except it doesn't get out far enough. But with public and private benefit, how hard would it be for Mr. Vaughn or a committee to look at the eastern end of county? And I've got one in mind that we develop bicycle trails if you went across Broadway and down Piney and around, what, you got a 60 or 70 mile trail there that you could advertise on the national forest land with a little bit of cooperation from landowners. Since the National Forest Service is not doing anything, some of those forest trails in the eastern district could be developed into trails, couldn't they? But if you just look at that map, which I was doing the other day, that brochure, there's not much going on east of Whipple as far as trails or hiking, but that's where our growth is along the corridor. If you look at the building permits, those two districts is where we're getting a lot of growth, but that's a total picture. And I guess a comprehensive look at tourism would be the right thing. Is that something the planning commission could focus on and?
I think planning commission and the recreation department, the mountain bike trails is a huge attraction to a lot of people. Mr. Crisp has pushed that from, from his experience and his knowledge of trails. I mean, earlier this year, he went to, or last year, what, was it Canada or somewhere up in the northeast, somewhere or another to, up in the northwest to do a, like a three or four day trail riding event that goes on up there. The town of Whipple, I was just talking to a gentleman the other day, they are getting ready to build some more trails and mountain bike trails and stuff inside their Crystal Springs Recreation Area. The trails existence over in Gene's district, I biked most all of those over there that the horsemen ride a lot on as well. There's a lot of bikers that go in those areas. There's trails over the Crawfish Valley area that they do a lot on. I think some development of some of those areas in the eastern end of the county would do well, but I think promotion of those with the tourism you're talking about is critical for, for bringing people in. We've got the resources here to do it.
Well, I guess Sheriff probably knows from his activities, if we did some interfacing with Pulaski County, that eastern corner up there between Blaine and Pulaski County, northwest of where I live, it's 20-plus miles to any civilization or electric lights. If you get over that ridge into Cox's Hollow, Keith, there's wilderness as far as you can go back to there. And we have the lake that you can work with the town and connect some trails to the lake and their facilities they've already got there. I haven't actually seen it, but I've heard that they've developed a trail all the way up to the West County line now from, from the lake. You know, there used to be one there and then the vandalism was so bad they closed it, but I hear they've developed that. You can cross and come over and it's private land, but I think they would, might work with you to get over to the golf course. All that's related to a network of trails that could be capitalized.
Well, I don't mean to get us too deep in the woods here, but those are the type of things I want to talk about where, what we're, you know, type of projects, and I'm glad Mr. Hale brought those up because the blue ways is one that I really think we need to be supporting. I think that the trail development is one in finding ways of developing and supporting it in that entire tourism side of it.
And keep supporting what they call the trail from run out.
Yeah, Ryan and I have attended those meetings. That's a. Yeah. That, that Brian and I have attended those meetings. They, that's a, it's just all in marketing. I mean, it, it's a big deal just to, to get that all the way through.
And, you know, and we still need to work on industrial development in the county and, uh, you know, and retail development. And that's, you know, uh, Mr. Sutherland asked me, you know, if we discussed, um, renewing with, uh...
For the third year.
Um, with, uh, Retail Coach. And that's something we go out to be discussing, you know, I think in Economic Development Committee meeting. Uh, you know, just what if they, what if we got out of that partnership with them in the past three years? So, uh, we need to do better. I think there are people out there that is looking and, you know, in the economy we have right now, uh, we need to get some industry in here. And, uh, we need to, uh, make sure the JIDA and Josh, uh, what is that, what's it called?
VIAA, Virginia Industrial Advancement Alliance.
Are out there promoting West County and, and the region. Uh, I think we're lacking in that. And I think the state is lacking on their end too, which I guess everybody's heard that Amazon has, is gonna be moving their second headquarters to northern Virginia. And hopefully, you know, we can get some spinoff, you know, in southwest Virginia. You know, some satellite companies that, that deal with them or distribution centers or something like that, uh, out in this part of the state. So, we need to work on that.
Well, thank you for the input and, and, uh, that gives us some guidance, especially working with staff in the process. From the revenue projections, uh, obviously the, uh, the staff's goal is to obviously look at no increases. Obviously, the numbers that, uh, Ms. Barker gave us, the, uh, public service increase this year is substantial and that should help out, uh, a lot in the process as well. So certainly we'll be looking at a budget, uh, proposal with no tax increase. A few items that I just wrote down, just to see if you all tend to agree. The capital expenditure side on the water side, primarily focusing on internal repair and maintenance type projects and fixing old lines, not looking at any expansions right now, other than maybe a few places where it may be cheap to put a line and pick up a whole lot of customers in some of the areas we've talked about. But, um, we've expanded out, but in the process of expanding out, we've got some lines in the water committee talked about it the other day that, uh, have been in the ground for many, many years that need to start getting replaced. So, uh, our focus from the water side will be back on, I'll call it, looking inside, fixing, repair and maintenance. Our wastewater treatment plant's got some age on it. There's some items there for repair and maintenance that Mr. Crisp has talked about. Uh, and as long as you all are acceptable about that, that sort of will be the focus we're aiming for on the water side. The major wastewater project is, would be the 9452 project.
And I'd also like to, like, if we look at, you know, one-time cost projects. I know we've got some extra money, you know, in, in this year's budget that, uh, we can use for, uh, one-time costs and things that have been neglected in the county that is just, that needs to be fixed.
Outside of water.
Outside of water.
Yeah, yeah. Gotcha. Uh, obviously, uh, on the, on the buildings and grounds side, um, we've got to do, and now we've got a full staff, there's a lot of, of cleaning, maintenance things around this courthouse. Uh, Mr. Vaughn's still looking at mold on certain buildings and sides up there that need to be power washed and cleaned. Those things are not capital expenditure items, but certainly there's a lot of items that need to be addressed and some capital expenditure items on the courthouse complex in itself in the process.
Well, I haven't mentioned this, but the roof needs to be fixed and circuit court. I mean, I need, is it still under warranty?
I don't believe it is.
I thought they fixed it.
The leak's fixed. The leak was fixed the last time I checked. I went down and met with the judge last week and talked about courthouse, uh, and some of those things.
But the last time I was there, they was four trash cans sitting in the hallway.
No, they're gone. They're gone.
They're gone. Janie got her trash can back.
Yeah.
Well, based on that circuit court group, it, it's, it's outlive what you bought.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we're gonna do a better job of fixing and not go down the route we did with the main courthouse. Uh, I regret how we handled that and how long it took and the inconvenience. When I knew better. I mean, I knew what we were getting into and over a few dollars, we bought a lot of pain, uh, by, by who it went with. And the state law does allow you to reject a bidder if you know they're incompetent or non-responsive. But, uh, the procurement process failed us there on that metal roof. Mr. Reeve touched on this thing of one-time projects there. There's a lot of one-time projects that if, if we commit a little bit of money for matching grant funds, those little grant funds that are out there that nobody ever applies for is low brood if you got something to go with it.
What, one of the things that I've got on there as well in buildings and grounds is, in recreation both, is Ager Park Playground. Um, that's probably a million dollar project. Now, it doesn't have to all be done in one year. It can be done in sections. It can take parts out or whatever. But that 1994 playground was rejuvenated in 2011, I believe it was, with, uh, some hard work. But there's a lot of it that needs to be changed and come out. Um, and we can work on a phasing plan of it. It needs community support like the first project did, but that's difficult to get. But it also needs grant support as well of that whole project.
Well, educate me a little bit. From where, where Coy and Gene and, uh, Brian and I live, that's an extension of the town. How much do they put into that park?
They do not.
So, you know, that, that park is the Whiffle Town Park that the county provides. And...
I agree partially, but it's, it's used by a tremendous amount of county citizens.
Not from where we live it is not.
Yeah, they are. We do the, we do all the ballgames up there.
Because you schedule them up there.
Exactly.
It's not because it's convenient for the people in the county.
Believe it or not, Joe, the Pulaski County Elementary Schools come to Ager Park to play on the playground. I don't know if they did this last year or not, but, uh, that's, they, they scheduled time to come down and, and be over there.
Must have been a field trip for them. Why would they not go to that facility at Randolph Park?
That made me feel good when I saw them out there.
Apparently, we didn't, apparently we need to charge them admission.
It's 50 miles.
Yeah.
When my kids come out of Baron Springs, to Whiffle, to play ball, 25 up, 25 back.
This public record...
Well, we be in fire to them.
Uh, you can't play in a sandbox unless everybody plays in a sandbox. And I don't see a lot of participation with anything that we do that the county, that the town helps us. That's a perfect example that the town could come and help do whatever you want to do. And it just seems like good business to me that we have a little pressure. I mean, you tell me what Mr. Sutherland wants and what, what he thinks.
Why don't, Stephen, you, we have a, a, a town and county committee, and I think they do too. I think so. Why don't you see if you can get them together and talk about partner with, uh, the town. Uh, I don't know what kind of incentives we'd have to, you know, to give the town to help, kind of help renovate, uh, the playground. Cause I didn't, you know, I'd kind of forgot about it, but, uh, the Ruine Team Club helped Mount Rogers when they had their, you know, picnic day for their clients and stuff, the people that work with them out there. And, uh, you know, that was the co, I got more comments on the playground down there and the bees.
Yeah.
Um, down there than, than with anything. I mean, they, we need to do some work on it.
And, and I understand exactly what, what Coy's talking about, the distance. I mean, it's, it, that was developed as the original county park years ago when they got the industrial park area because of the centralized location, you know, from ball fields and things. But is it convenient to speedball to Ruine Retreat, uh, Baron Springs and all the rest of them? You know, it's not. But, uh, it's difficult to have those in all locations. And it, you know, I, I don't know what the solution is, but it needs to be on the agenda. If it's, if it's an item to, you know, not renovate and start taking down pieces as they fall apart and, and take it down to a smaller playground or whatever. If it's, uh, you know, spreading playgrounds out throughout the community, uh, all of those items, you know, those are the things that we'll, we'll just have to look at and see.
And that's surely wasn't what I was suggesting. I just like to see some town, town money help support the town park.
You know, it's gotten so bad a shape now that, you know, I think if it was renovated, there'd be a lot more people using it, a lot more kids using it than what there are now.
Well, and, and what Mr. Hale said, I, we're lucky on my end of the county because we do have the one at Lake and, which is used by a lot, and then the one there at the community center, uh, in town. But I agree with what he's saying. There's not much... On the eastern end.
Yeah.
I'm not saying don't spend no money out there. Just, I'm saying spend a little on my end down there. How many times have I voted to send money up here to Ruine Retreat Lake, swimming pool?
It'd be nice if you could put a playground in.
It's time.
And I agree with Coy. I mean, uh, you know, it hasn't been long since we renovated the, the playground that, that campground happened.
Uh, actually, Mr., um...
Coy, don't forget about my end. We just got y'all two new fire trucks.
Yeah.
You put water down there too?
No. Yeah. We don't want water down there. You could have all the water on your end.
Last one on this county to get anything, so. Time, time is moving on.
If you move some water, you could be Jack Piro.
I got you.
Five o'clock to get him out fast, or you play ball.
We'll move along. If, if you've got anything else, email Stephen, you know, and, uh, and I know we could sit here all day and come up with stuff that we need to do in the county. But, yeah, it's only money. But money only goes so, so far, then you have to start asking the taxpayers for more. So, but, uh, let's see what we, what we come up with this year. Anything else, Stephen?
Uh, no, sir. That's, um, all that I have right now, other than before the end of the meeting, we do need to, uh, Martha's got the sheets to hand out. Have you appoint all of the committees and all of that for the, uh, uh, water and sewer and all of those, water, wastewater, all of those committees? Or just leave them as they are for right now in the process and...
Well, I'm gonna ask, does, does anybody want any changes in committees that they're on? Not, they're all reappointed to the same committees.
That's very good. Now, I assume all of your liaisons will stay the same as well?
Yeah.
That's easy enough, Mr. Chairman?
What, what are those liaisons?
You're supposed to go by there once in a while and talk to them.
You are liaison with the clerk of the circuit court currently?
Well, that, I never have talked to the clerk in, in seven years. Uh, what does the clerk need to talk about?
My understanding, when they started this concept years ago, was just to have someone that on the board that was, they could come to and talk to and say, "Hey, these are some issues or these some things I need," whether it's personnel, whether it's whatever, and just be a conduit for you to, to bring back to the board as well.
That was, I mean, like the, the door down at the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Yeah.
That, you know, when I went and talked to them, that was, you know, one of their major complaints, which I know about already, but, you know, they...
I hadn't been born for a while. I used to go talk to Hayden. I'd go talk to Fay, you know, just see what kind of problems they do have. And most of the time they tell you if they got a problem, then we try to bring it to Stephen or Salo and, and then Stephen's attention and try to get it fixed.
I mean, most of the issues is not, it's anything, I mean, they're probably contacting me anyway and letting me know what's going on. And that's the way, in my opinion, it should work in the process. But this just gave them a board member as well as, uh, as someone to, to talk to and say, "Hey, Stephen hadn't fixed my door yet," or whatever the process may be. Or, "This is something we need to look at long-term, just letting you know in the process."
It's a good concept.
Okay. Is that all you've got?
That's all I've got?
County attorney, been awful quiet over here. Scott?
I stayed out of trouble that week. I don't have anything to report this time. Thank you.
Okay. Board supervisors, uh, I know we've done, covered the VDOT, but Mr. Vaughn, do you have anything out that you want to bring forward the board at this time?
I, I had a issue with the lights been out at the recycle center, but I contacted Stephen and they took care of it pretty timely.
And on that same subject, they're also replacing some of the poles and putting some higher lights up. It'll give more coverage.
And I would, I would offer that, uh, you guys and lady might want to check the ones in your district because we were down to one light in the retreat and it was, last time I was, the place that dark was when I was in the alley in New Orleans. They did take care of it.
Is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
West Whipple?
Nothing at this time.
East Whipple?
I think everything's been covered. Nothing at this time.
Fort Chisel District?
Oh, brought it up. But how about the trash at the truck stops? That, I talked to you a couple of weeks ago about that when we had the holidays. But, uh, love is just as bad on the Lee Highway side. Uh, and I realize that normally when Arlen goes and talks to them, they, they deal with it. And, uh, I expect that 77, it's always gonna be there. The fence is gonna help some. When we get that fence up, it'll catch most of that windblown trash off their parking lots against the fence. We'd better build that fence strong enough to handle the wind load when it gets full of trash. But, uh, at least they can get to it a lot quicker if it's on their side of the fence.
And we don't need to let trash get that piled up before we tell them they need to clean it up. Is that all you have, Mr. Hale?
Yeah, I'm happy with the trash pickup. I hope y'all will continue to push that program and keep it alive. It's, I think it's one of the best things for the money that we do. The county just looks a whole lot better.
And I just wish people would see them out there cleaned up and realize they don't need to throw stuff out their vehicle windows.
Well, Sheriff promised that he was gonna have a program in schools to start teaching about anti-littering at the elementary level. We're not gonna change those old hardheads that are already out of school. But if we started with the kids and some of those old programs with Al, you know, and Iron Eyes Cody saying, "Don't pollute," all that stuff's still out there, Sheriff.
No, it's not.
You mean you can't find that stuff?
I, I, I don't want to speak to the sheriff, but as a favor to you, I spent about four hours one night trying to find a litter education program. And I don't know what's happened to it.
Maybe that's something we need to ask the state to develop.
I, I, I was really, and Joe, I'm not just, I'm not just telling you this. I was really gonna surprise you with it because, you know, we got the element, we got the SROs and elementary schools. And, and I know that they're doing their own thing, but there's not a standardized... They're, they're talking to the kids about it, but as far as the give a hoop, don't pollute, you know, the standardized program, couldn't find anything.
You know, ma, maybe if the county gave an award to the school and let the schools develop it, to give some kind of annual award or a cheap wall pla, a good wall plaque to the school that has done the most for litter education. Do some incentive to get these kids involved to quit throwing McDonald's packages and everything I see wants a Chick-fil-A. That means we're gonna have Chick-fil-A wrappers added to the McDonald's wrappers unless we teach those kids to call the parents or the, the... we teach those kids to call the parents or the adults down, we don't throw trash out.
Yeah, that Chick-fil-A litter, that Chick-fil-A litter will get them Yankees off the interstate like you was talking about. So that's really economic development.
You know, I see it firsthand, I live on the service road on, on Chapman Road, and they can pick up trash one day, and I ride from my house down the road to the barn, and I mean, beer bottles, just, I mean, that, the, the bays can be sitting there, and they've done went through, and there's, and they, they're still throwing trash up afterwards.
And, Joe, I think many of y'all know, Mr., we pay for Mr. Erickson for salary regardless, so when it's twelve inches of snow, they can't pick up trash or whatever, on some of those days and cold days, we've, uh, put them in the Apex Center picking up rocks. So, uh, um, it's a, it's a good use of the labor and the process and, uh, not costing us anything extra to do so.
We could go back to the old days and give them one tool, and they can make little rocks out of big rocks.
Big rocks.
Mr. Vaughn had something.
Based on my previous life, at Fort Lee as the environmental chief, there's a program out there called Keep America Beautiful, and a subsidiary in the Commonwealth is Keep Virginia Beautiful. Now, unless something's changed in the last five years, that's an annual program, but it's local groups that, it sounds like it's, I know in Pulaski, they were always bringing Pulaski Elementary School over there and getting a first, second, or third place award in the state for their, whatever program they did, a lot of it had to do with pollution prevention and litter control. You might consider starting up a citizens group to focus on that, maybe takes a few dollars to put literature out there to the schools, and start affiliating maybe with Keep Virginia Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful, and start that program at, at the root level. That's what Pulaski done it for years. Fort Lee, we would win first, second, third, pollution prevention or whatever every year when I was running the, the environmental shop. But I was interested that, I didn't really knew where Pulaski County was, and I'd talked to the lady at the awards ceremony, and she, oh yeah, we drove, it took four hours to get here. I went, oh my God, you're all the way out there, the tip somewhere. But the program is, is available, it's out there, and I think it's still running. So you might consider an exploratory, put a group together, maybe getting some concerned citizens, it sounds like a couple of y'all might be interested in something like that, and start building that.
Sounds like you're volunteering for another job.
Yeah, yep. I can kinda help you out on that. I mean, I've been sitting here kinda asking around the last couple of years, I said, we don't have any Keep Virginia, Keep America Beautiful type thing, and it is recognized.
Well, they've got a dot the highway, and, you know, most of that is here in town. I mean, they're, the-
Very similar program.
-routin's and Rotary and, I think Pick Up Trash here, we, I'm Whipple Ro, uh, Ruting Club, and we do it on East Main Street, but-
So, Mr. Vaughn, maybe Google Keep America Beautiful-
I'm actually looking at it.
Keep Virginia Beautiful and see, see what's there.
And, and, you know, what I looked at, and this is what Mr. Hale talked about, was getting them in the elementary schools. Uh, based on what I'm just glancing at here, this is, it's geared more towards middle and high school students. Um, and that's, that's what I was trying to find, something in the elementary level.
But it's there, the, the programs there, they actually have resources and literature and things to do, and it's, it's a, it's a kind of a competition thing, and once you get your program going, you, you put in your award packages, you compete, you get recognized, and as you know, publish a pair so that you get recognized, and that just adds to the fuel for the fire.
Well, in my opinion, I think they'd retain it better what they learned, if there was a middle school and high school.
But, I know back at Chesterfield and places, uh, they would teach this in the school, and that the parents would not recycle, and the kids would be sitting around the dinner table and say, Mama, why'd you throw that in the trash, I should've gone in the recycle bin. Catch them when they're young.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Okay, Len Mains, you have anything else?
I have one other comment, I might say, I hope that I am offended anybody with what I had to say. I'm not interested in building a wall from Fort Chisels to Adam. I'm interested in turning it down. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Gene?
Uh, the only thing I had was, can we check with DEQ and them and make sure, about the feedlot?
Yeah, you got an email.
Or, I mean, unless I'm mistaken, V-Dot told us years ago that they, that he could not run plastic pipes off the bank into their ditch, but they are still there. And I don't understand, if he can't do it, why they're still there.
Yeah, I understood that was temporary.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago.
I think temporary has become permanent.
The last email from a couple of weeks ago, uh, they're still monitoring, they were aware of some of the situations, uh, we haven't been involved with apparently DEQ and the V-Dax votes, have been watching the situation.
Well, I've got a neighbor, he's actually my neighbor, but he's across, I guess he's the, their neighbor too, but from his house, he said you can watch the manure coming down the bank like a lava flow. He said it slowly but surely just keeps easing down the bank.
Well, it's, I mean, they've been up, and I think you got the email where it said they had them put the, uh-
I got it, and said there was nothing wrong.
Yeah, they put the gutters on the, the buildings and all that to try to control some of the runoff, but, yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep following up on it.
If they say there's nothing wrong with it, then ask them if I put in a big concrete catch pond to catch all the manure out of my cattle, can I just put a tube to put it right into the river creek? That'd be okay, wouldn't it? And while I'm at it, we'll just run the toilet out there too. Don't look at me like that, Chief.
You down to me? Well, I've got, I got a few things that I'd like to give an update on. It's happened in the last, um, three weeks. I give Stephen the, the financial form that the, the governor's group had that day, and I, he looked through it, and really, there's, the only thing I got out of that is the governor's wanting to spend some one-time money that the state has got for recurring costs, so I don't know how he's gonna fund it for upcoming years. But, um, our, um, trip to Washington later on that week, uh, was a good trip, uh, got to meet, uh, people all over the United States, from Arkansas to California, their executive directors of their associations and presidents. Uh, it was a good three-day event, uh, learned a lot, found out that they have the same problems that we have, a lot I can do. Uh, they did give an update on opioid, um, lawsuits that have been filed all over, uh, the United States, some federal and some in states, which, you know, they think the, all the states, they have filed states going to, going into federal. They had, uh, and they give, the update they give that, uh, they're already in, uh, talks of settlement talks, so, uh, you know, they seem to think it's gonna be fast, but I still think it's gonna be several years down the road. But, uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk, and I think there's, there's a lot of evidence out there that, uh, the family that, um, produces OxyContin and their marketing practices, really, I think a judge has done, ruled on that that it, they, they weren't only up and up as far as marketing, especially the addictive side of it. Our cigarette tax legislation, I went to Richmond last week and spent all of about twelve hours at the General Assembly, testified in front of the Senate Finance Committee and the House. Uh, this year we did get to a vote, instead of them tabling it. Uh, on the Senate side, um, the chairman of the Finance Committee, you know, said this year wasn't the right year. Uh, he openly, uh, said he supports it, uh, said next year he would co-sponsor the bill, made sure it could gets out of committee, so if he's our next year. In the House, it was a little different story, we thought we had the votes to get it out of the Subcommittee of the House. I went and spoke to Delegate Wire, the chairman of the Finance Committee on the House side, on Tuesday before I went to Washington, and, uh, you know, he, he told me he didn't have a position on it, uh, you know, it was, I had a good conversation with him, uh, we spent, me and Mr. Dean Lynch, uh, the executive director of VACO, spent probably a half an hour in his office, and, uh, I explained to him what benefits and what the counties were facing, and, uh, how the extra revenue that we could generate off of the cigarette tax could help the county, you know, as far as, uh, spreading our tax burden out and not putting all our tax burden, burden on real estate and personal property, um, have, you know, better ways of, uh, of spreading it out and even equal taxation between city, counties, and towns, give everybody the, the same opportunity to, in levy taxes on certain things as cities and towns does. Uh, his comment on that was he'd like to see a study on that, the, on the, if they, uh, send the money back to the counties, what they spend on studies, we'd be set in pretty good shape. But, uh, when we come to the Subcommittee hearing last week, and, uh, this was about five-thirty or six in the afternoon, evening, when I testified, Senator Wire, Delegate Wire, which is chairman of the Full Committee, come to the Subcommittee hearing, and, uh, after we discussed it and I'd got up and testified, he made a motion to table it, which that failed, uh, and it did come to a vote, and it was a tie vote, four-four, which, uh, killed the, the motion to bring it out of committee. So, you know, we're, we're making headway. Uh, I talked to Mr. Lynch this morning, and, uh, trying to find out when, um, there's a bill in City Counties and Town Committee, uh, that Delegate Kilgore is, uh, spot, uh, put in that, uh, for equal taxation between city, counties, and town. And I'm trying to find out when it is doctored on the committee, or I can go to Richmond and testify, uh, to that. May the eighteenth, uh, VACO will be having a Board of Directors meeting here in Whipple, uh, With County, uh, they've already booked, uh, Bowlin Wilson Hotel, uh, all the rooms except for two, uh, they couldn't, they had two that they couldn't book. There will be a reception and dinner on, on the Saturday night. Looking for any suggestions over the next, next month, we prepare for this, uh, where to take them, what they need to visit, uh, making them up a little, you know, most, uh, when we go to, uh, the president's county for the spring meeting each, each year, uh, the president does, uh, supply a little tote bag with the county seal and, and different things in the bag, like pens and, uh, brochures, you know, our, our brochure that, uh, just to promote the county.
We don't have a problem with you buying that stuff to give them.
Well, I think you ought to give them a last year's pumpkin.
A last year's pumpkin. But, uh, they will be probably, um, I forget now how many, it'd be, uh, probably sixty-some people here, counting their spouses, uh, and board members from all across, everybody, you know, from the eastern shore, uh, this is the first time they've been out here in a long time.
Forever.
Well, the, you know, the last president from With County was nineteen fifty-five, and, uh, that was that, uh, Isaiah Porter in nineteen fifty-five, and, uh, the last president from Region Twelve was, uh, Mr. Blevins from, uh, Smith County, and that was in ninety-five. So it's been a long time since, uh, the Board of Directors from, uh, VACO has, has been to Southwest Virginia, they're all looking forward to it. Uh, got a couple that's coming early, uh, they even got one that wants to buy some, from the eastern shore, wants to buy some land in With County or Blaine County to build a, a summer cabin or cabin for-
Roughly, how many people will they be bringing? Can Dean tell you, was that fifty or?
Well, we'll know, he's asked, uh, he, we'll know here shortly, because, uh, we have a board meeting next Wednesday morning, uh, hopefully I'll find out then, or, uh, close to then, not a little bit after, how many people will be coming to, to the spring Board of Directors meeting. It's usually tended pretty well, pretty good.
Well, are, are you planning for the Apex Meeting Rooms to be your focus of, of having it there?
It depends now, that, when, you know, if they're having an event there that night, uh, it's kinda, it would be kinda hard to have a, a dinner and a reception there at the, at the Apex Center, uh, if they're having some kind of event there.
You do realize we had motels in the county, I mean, they may not be as fancy, but we did have motels in the county.
Thank you, Gene, that's what I was-
I mean, because evidently the, the vice, I thought the president was from With County, but evidently he's from town of Whipple.
Well, the reason why they, they picked that was because of the, uh, the restaurant in the hotel.
Denny's is out in the county.
Yeah, Denny's is out in the county.
Country sells subs.
I agree. But, uh, you know, uh, you know, toilet either form-
I'll, I'll help out the chairman here, most of all of them are making their reservations through the county, and they're all tax-exempt organizations, they'll be filling out tax-exempt forms.
Yeah.
Welcome to town of Whipple. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you'll give me, and I know everybody wants to get out of here, but we talked about this last night, and you talking about, uh, General Assembly and, and VACO, is there any way that VACO can address what we were talking about last night? I hate that Fay and Lori left about the comp board not funding what's due to the county, and, and the sheriff's still here, I don't know if he wants to speak on that, but-
Well, there are some bills in, uh, and we talked to Delegate Wire about, uh, the one deputy for over fifteen hundred, uh, population, which I don't know if that would raise our, would that raise ours back up to the, ain't that what it's supposed to be?
It's supposed to be, and there's, uh, different formulas for, uh, civil process, how, how, how rural you are and, uh, the more rural you are, you actually get more people, because it takes more time to travel and, and you work in the city, so that's where we're at, I think.
Well, we ask them to go, to do what they're supposed to be doing, uh, and there's some bills in to do that, so, uh, uh, we can, we can, uh, we can check in on that, especially when they come up in front of committees and stuff. Because I, I mean, you know, it takes me four hours to get there, and if there's something, you know, two or three nights and hit the day, and, and spend all day and spend the night and come back, I don't, I don't mind doing that. And, you know, and, and they're appreciative, you know, for the members of the board, you know, and the cigarette tax bill, Eric Workman from Blaine County went, and I can't thank the supervisor from Pulaski County went. But it, it, it has an impact on them when, you know, the, uh, local elected officials come and, and support these bills. I mean, VACO gets up and supports them all, and, and they do go around and lobby, and our lobbyist was there that we hired, and he'd been around and, and he'd talked to everyone, and he had a list, you know, he knew the, uh, the ones that were gonna vote for it, the ones that's gonna vote and said they, uh, couldn't vote for it. Uh, we went and talked to the new delegate in Roanoke County, and it, it mattered what it was for, he said, I know, you can use the money, but, and he said, I'm not voting for no new taxes. I mean, to me, that's a cop-out. I mean, you know, eventually, I mean, you, that's the, uh, mentality of the state now is, you know, on just no new taxes, you know, just shovel it on down to the county and, and they can, they can raise the money.
David told us that. David Suterlin said, I'm never gonna vote for a new tax. And whether it's here or whether they do it, it's the same thing, except who takes the burden, isn't it?
You know, we explained that to them, I said, you know, you're not oppo, opposing a new tax on people, you're just giving the counties authority, the same authority as Fairfax and Arlington and every city in town.
Now, what is the status, is it still in committee or is it out of committee?
It's still in committee, it, it's in city, county, it's in town, com- It's still in committee, it's in city, county, it's in town committee, and it's not, I'm trying to find out now, Dean said he'd tell me, he'd let me know the day or tomorrow, if he could find out when it was doctored to come before the committee. That's, that's about all I have, any questions on anything that I brought up? You know, Stephen, we might get, you know, call our representation on the opioid lawsuits and get a written update, I hate to ask them from Tennessee to come here, and I know Jeff and...
Well, I did talk to Senator Chapin, and he said that this thing is moving really fast and really favorable, you know, he's part of that law firm, or that conglomerate of lawyers that, he was really positive as an attorney, how fast it's moving. Scott, I guess you can tell us, is it moving faster? I know it's faster than the tobacco legislation moved.
I can't tell you, I know it's moving along, you know, we, they've entered a bunch of information stuff, and sent them in December from us, I've not heard anything since then about what's been going on, so, they're on top of it, they're, you know...
Well, Chapin and I talked about it when we were at Tobacco Commission.
Okay, well, let's move on to our agenda, new business, consent counter, entertain a motion to approve the consent counter?
So moved.
Have a second, motion and a second, any discussions, questions, hear none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vaughn?
Nah.
Hi.
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 And the chair votes, uh, okay, draft budget counter for 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I have got a budget calendar that I would recommend your halls approve of if acceptable, and as my goal on this calendar, I would really like to see us adopting a budget by the end of May this year, it would be beneficial for the collections, as Lori talked about in here before, and getting everything in place, and I think it's a reasonable goal. I have set three days for the board work session, as opposed to four days that we've typically done, I do believe we can get it done in three days, and then, instead of meeting on Thursday, following those with the school, I thought we would just do it following our day meeting the next week, along the lines of what Mr. Hale was saying, while you've already taken a day off, we would meet with the school board probably at 1:00 on that day, and do it then. So if that calendar works for everyone, that will be the goal that we're working with.
Okay, I hope everybody's had a chance to look at this, and I entertain a motion to approve.
I'm gonna get motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
I don't like it, because I won't, we don't have no budget work session on my birthday. We've always had that.
I'll be out of town on the 26th, is the school board portion, if that's something I can do via telephone?
To be able to, yes.
I know that's one of the most important parts.
Is there any chance we could have the school superintendent over for?
When will you be?
For a visit prior to us getting into the budget with them? There's a couple of things that, that he's, I know he's worked on, and I'd like for him to have an opportunity to discuss that with board superiors prior to us getting into the budget session.
Would you like to see if he can come to the next board meeting?
Yeah, this might not be something, we might need a work session instead of being in the public meeting.
I'm trying to keep you from coming very often.
No, I mean, you'll come up with some rule that we could go into a closed session to discuss, well, if it discusses personnel and it discusses property, you can go there.
Well, I mean, if it's school board personnel, they can go there, but their personnel are not our personnel, so, correct? Mr. Vaughn?
Since that is one of our biggest budget items and stuff, and I'd like for everybody to be here, can we change that 26th date to accommodate Ryan to a different date, either before the 24th?
I'll be on the 25th through the 29th, that whole week, and I'm sorry, I would change it if I could, but...
Well, we can go back to Thursday, the 21st, at 9:00 a.m., and do it at that point in time, if that would work.
Sorry, you're on, it's in our...
Okay. Just make the motion to approve the calendar as amended.
Will this be an all-day meeting?
18th, 19th, and 20th will be the all-day meeting, the 21st would just be with the school board for probably about an hour, and then that would be it.
I can see that, which month are you talking?
March 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st.
And the year is 19th.
I'll make that motion to amend the budget calendar.
Okay, we have a second.
Say that again in March.
18th, 19th, 20th, and 21st.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So said.
We'll revise that, we'll print, put copies in all of your boxes, and that'll be the goal we're going off of.
Martha, do a draft menu.
Draft menu? Cold pizza.
Might need to change fire rescue, I think.
Cold vegetarian, that's true.
Okay, we've done been through V-Doc.
Week that week that you'll have to change.
Mr. Barret, anything else to come forward to board at this time?
I am not aware of anything else, Mr. Chairman. I will be sending out agendas, probably tomorrow for next week, for our meeting on that, with the legislators.
I will be going back to Richmond tomorrow for VACO and BML reception and Executive Committee Dinner, and try to get to some more information on some of the bills at the General Assembly tomorrow, try to get down there a little early, or if I need to go to the General Assembly, I can.
One quick item, just consideration on that, Mr. Chairman, if I might, the, we are, we are going down Wednesday, rural caucuses that night, legislative day is the next night. I know some of you all would like to come back Thursday after that is over, if we can get a dinner with one of our legislators, or working with Blaine and Smith, or somebody to get joint dinner with one of our legislators, is there any of you all that would like to stay for the second night, or any of you that can't stay for the second night, just so we sort of can make our plans, or you'll be there, I know.
I'll be there until Friday.
I would stay.
I would stay.
I'll stay if you can let me know.
Okay.
Did you say?
I can stay, it's...
Could we try to have a dinner with Blaine?
I said, try to get our legislators, but it may be having a joint dinner with several of them.
Well, we could get Will there, if Blaine invites him.
And really, I'd like to, you know, get Carrico and Campbell there, because they, they help us a lot, and they, anything that we've asked them to put in, they put it in. Some of it hasn't been successful, but we have got several things through that Campbell's, Delegate Campbell, Senator Carrico has done for us.
All right, we'll do so. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, does anybody else have anything to bring forward to board at this time? Hear none, we are adjourned.